Okay, Jeff, you get to start.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's board work session. I think as most of you know, as board member, Dr. Stallow is out this evening, so I'm standing in. So, tonight, we do have a fairly robust agenda. It's fairly focused on teaching and learning, some technology and budget. And so, what we're kind of keyed up to do here is to have, to go through this in a pretty high-level overview. We have a lot of information in our PowerPoints, but still, we want to allow you the opportunity to have some discussion and questions on it. Also note, too, that tonight, what you're seeing and hearing, for the most part, some of those things you'll start hearing with recurring theme, for sure, around personalized learning and some of the things that we're doing there. Innovative programming. Technology, again, is going to be a focus overview with some of the tools that we're looking at. And then also, too, just a continuation with looking at financial accountability and looking at budgetary components. Then we'll have an update on the attendance boundary meeting and the committee process here, too, and then, of course, some policies. So, with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. Our board agenda, the monthly review, we continue to review policies. That's an ongoing process. As Jeff mentioned, boundary changes and the communication surrounding that. And then, I had sent an email out to everyone about Robert's Rules webinar. Not sure who all were able to listen to it, but if you were not able to, or if you want the hard copy, I asked Martha to make copies of the PowerPoint presentation, and they're all in your mailboxes. So, that will address some of the PowerPoint question, or topic that had come up, and if we want, we can have further discussion at a future meeting about that. Then, I'm going to ask Julie Sink to jump in here on the financials with the discussion of the board packet. I think you sent out information what the treasurer gets and the board gets, and you're looking for some direction going forward, keeping in mind that the board's role on this information is operational oversight, and we need to caution ourselves not to get too far into the weeds when we're looking at this information. So, with that, I'll send it to you.
I think you said it really well. I was just looking for a direction. There's been some discussion on what you guys want to see, so this is what, the first part is what the treasurer receives, the remaining, what all other board members receive, and I guess it's up to you as to far as what you'd like to see.
Does anyone have any comments?
Is this currently, I'm sorry, is this currently how it's set up?
Yes.
Without the, okay.
All that stuff is on, where it says "all other board members" is what's on the consent agenda. But we get it.
So, Julie, just as a point of clarification, the components that the treasurer sees, are they available for any board member to come in and look at?
Martha has a list of all of those currently.
Okay, so before every board meeting, that they're put, that they're available? And that's been standard procedure?
That's been standard.
Okay.
I'd like, I've been saying this for two years and longer, I'd like to have what normally most boards and actually all boards that are found so far in the state of Minnesota receive and any other board member, and that's the right to be able to check on the details. Now, what normally happens is the treasurer gets it first, asks any questions, and then it gets sent in the board packet to everybody. There are cases where it happens too close to the beginning of the month where you can't get it, which is normal. You wait till the next month or something like that, and that's normal. But our fiduciary duties is we should be able to spot-check this stuff, or ask our own questions, or see the pattern of the behavior, et cetera, because we do have oversight of it. And people don't want to get in the weeds, and they don't have to look at it, but I do think it should be available for everybody. And available, by the way, in the board packet for the public, like most other places do, so that we're going to do data requests for it.
Well, that would be the key. It is available to all of us. It's whether we want it in the board packet or not, I guess, is the question.
Well, I, you know, I understand that it may be available in paper format or something like that, printed out. That's a lot of detail to sit there and try to read through and go through, check on something or whatever. I have never seen it in detail. I have gone in, and usually, it's prefaced with, "Well, what questions do you have?" And, you know, the thing is, is just that we shouldn't have to have a question or sit down and read a packet like that. We should be able to view it when we need to, and it should be available to the public because it is public data. So, I just think that, you know, and I understand, I think you explained one time to me, the history of when it happened, but now that we have PDFs and online, it's a lot easier to stick it out there. And I would prefer sticking it out there rather than killing a tree and do it, too.
Melissa?
I would agree with Mary. I would follow other boards around the state. They have it out there. It's available for the public. This is public information, it's public tax-paying dollars, and I think it should be out there. To require a board member to come in, to make a special appointment to view it, and then ask questions on the spot, I mean, I don't agree that that's best practice.
Okay. Just for clarification, this is, this is available to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not in the board packet?
It's not in the board packet, but it is available to the public, just to clarify that they could see it if they want to. It's not private.
But again, they'd have to come in to do it, like we have to do. So, I disagree with the way it's done today, and I would support Mary.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Did you have others?
No, I agree. I'm an electronic person. I'd like to see it electronically. I don't necessarily need to see it every single night, but if I do want to see it, I'd like to have access to be able to view it, and carry the data. If that's what you so choose, or how to spend my free time, I think that would be something to see.
So, I have a question for the more veteran board members. Do you feel like what we get without coming in doesn't give us enough for governance and for catching things? And are you looking, are we getting some sort of direction that we should be getting into these financials more than we currently do? So, I'm looking for guidance from the folks who've been on for several years.
It's part of a due diligence. It's part of a due diligence that we have to do as elected board officials.
Right, I realize that. I'm just saying, to what, to what level of detail?
Well, first of all, we're statutorily accountable for that. That's one of the pillars of our oversight.
Right, I realize that.
And to vote on and to approve a budget based upon only fund balances without any detail underneath is, usually would not be acceptable to...
To school boards?
Well, to any board, actually.
Right.
Because you are the, we, if there's no precedent, assuming so, this certainly is in other states, where if there is a financial thing that we approved that shouldn't have been approved, or we're not at least knowledgeable about it, that we can't be held accountable to that.
Sure.
In various ways. So, but also, you know, it's just to get, it's sort of like, at the end of the month, instead of getting your bank statement, whether you decide to look over every line item, you only get the total?
Right.
And you're supposed to just approve it for your bank?
Yeah.
That's not, that's not, that we shouldn't be acceptable, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
And we used to do it that way, currently.
Yep. Currently, we do it. It wasn't always that way. Stacy?
I guess, I had, I would have a question then, as a board member. If we were to get all these reports, which I think would, you know, is fine in some form or another, but, so if I had a question on, say, a check disbursed, there's a $5,000 check, I mean, what, I guess I would ask the board members, "How would you handle that? If you had a question about that, you get the board packet, what would you do?" I mean, what...
Would we have the detail?
Well, yeah, if you had the detail, and you had a question about that detail, like you saw that check disbursed, minute or whatever, and you questioned that check.
Then I'd send an email in and say, you know, "I have a question about this."
I think, you know, I'm fine with moving forward towards this direction. I think, more or less, if it's going to be, it's how it's going to be handled, I guess, as a board member. If it's handled respectfully with the business office, you know, not doing the gotcha at the table, you know, knowing that we're over $100 million organization, and to think that someone on the spot is going to know what a $6,000 check, you know, without any advance warning, I think we have to have that discussion as well, is just how is it going to handle? I'd be, I'd be for moving, towards moving it online. I think it's going to make the board packet enormous, but if it's, you know, if it's part of, it's going to cut down on data requests and all this other kind of stuff, and we handle it fairly with the business office, and we follow the protocols that we have as a board, I'd be for moving it.
No, if, if, like most every other school district does it, it doesn't make the board packet any more important.
Excuse me, Mary, I was going to ask Michael, what your opinion would be on this now that you receive some information?
I guess the way Stacy is bringing it is helpful. One is, I wouldn't be opposed to getting it. Two would be, how would we handle it? And two, again, to how much will we get caught in weeds as opposed to oversight and just flagging things that might come up? Do you know what I mean? So, I, these are long-drawn-out things sometimes at board meetings, as is, and so I would just want to kind of get better at saying, "Okay, I'm doing my due diligence," and perhaps make sure that our policies address how people handle those questions.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think if it turns into kind of like not a good thing, I mean, in the sense of how we're treating employees, I don't, I don't think it's a good thing. You know, I think we have to make sure that our protocols are followed.
I don't think it should ever get into a situation of how we're treating employees. I mean, this is, this is data. Everyone's respectful.
Well, I think that's subjective at times. Jonathan?
I'm curious, Julie, if there's, if you have, what your concerns are, what, if any hesitation you would have in having that out there, or is there, can we, can we talk about the rationale for why it has been done the way it has been done for the past couple of years?
Well, it was a request of the board to not have it in the board packet, and so I'm following the request of the board, and that simply believes in what it did.
Okay.
It literally used to be a paper copy in our box.
It was about this, there, and it was, every check that the district wrote to every single person. And it was information that, if I'm going to be a true board member and governance, I didn't need to know that a check was written for $5 to so-and-so on this date. You know, it seems like there should be some kind of happy meeting somewhere, medium in between here, because I don't think we need to go through each check. And to Stacy's comment, you know, we find a check that, you know, like, "Why did they get a check written for this?" And I think that's where we could be, you know, questioning employees, like, "Why are we, why are they getting a check?" You know, we have to be respectful. This would still, I believe, remain on the consent agenda, so I would hate to see this come off the consent agenda so we could discuss why so-and-so got a check for $5,000 at a meeting. That doesn't seem appropriate to me or respectful. So, that would be where I would be cautioning the board about doing this. I'm fine if we want to put all that on there, but like I said, I'm not going to go through and look at every single check that's written for, you know, small amounts of money. And, you know, maybe that's not even the case anymore, maybe they're paid differently, but I believe it's still the same.
That's how it is, you know, like all the checks, all the wires.
It's about 250 pages.
Yeah.
That will come electronically in the board packet.
I guess, to me, there's, is there a distinction, and I would say that there is, a distinction between an oversight function and an auditing function? Because we're almost talking about we, as board members, going through, conducting essentially, whenever we decide to look, kind of auditing where the money's going. I don't, I don't know that I think that that's a government's, I don't know that I think that that's necessarily our role. But again, if it's, sunshine is always a good thing, right? Especially in March. Amen. And so, you know, the more that people can see if they want to find it, I think that's okay, and I think that's good. And I do think probably would be a good idea for us to agree, and I don't know that it's a policy, but I think that a, some sort of an informal agreement among board members, that if we are going to have questions about those things, it should not be pulled off of consent agenda in a, in a meeting setting. I agree that that would, to me, be inappropriate. Send a question ahead of time.
So, just to try to track here, from a PDF format in the board book, the same process or protocols are in place that as the board book is uploaded, or as the information's uploaded into board book, as board members, you're submitting questions or calling with questions to get additional information on any question that you might have. So, that would still remain.
Everyone's comfortable with that, or you have another question, comment?
I would just ask one question, too. Do you find with that information we've had, I mean, I know we've looked at it more carefully, but do we have, I guess, we have having problems where we haven't, where we have fallen red flags that we think are a problem, I haven't gotten the impression that we have, but in asking for all this extra detail, in other words, is there a reason we're not even asking that question very clearly, am I? But is there...
I've not had any reason to think that there's something I need to know more about.
Right, that's the question I'm trying to ask.
And if I don't understand something, I've made contact with Julie, or whoever, Margot at the time.
Thank you, I appreciate that background.
Okay, so, we'll try it in the board packet.
So, that will be for...
With that understanding, if you have a question.
April, April, starting at the April regular meeting, correct?
Yes.
Just be a matter of Martha putting all the...
If it's, if it's ready. It'll be ready April 8th, right?
You'll actually get two months of information, most likely.
Okay.
Okay.
So, as of the April 8th meeting in board book, you'll have this level of detail?
Okay. Moving on then, oversight of operations, facilities planning and construction.
Good evening, board members, administration. So, a quick update on our construction projects, where we're at, a lot of progress now that the weather's improving. Here's an update on our, what we have left out to bid and where we are under construction. We have Hamilton Ridge early package open last week. FLEURP will review that tomorrow night. We'll come to the board following meeting for approvals. And we are looking at going out to bid for the final project, other than Greenwood, 4:30. So, we're getting down towards the end. A few snapshots of what's going on out there. Again, here's the schematic of what we're doing, some remodeling for Greenwood, or I'm sorry, Westwood and Edgewood, and the link between the buildings through cafeteria and kitchen addition. Another schematical view of some of the mechanical work. Here are some pictures. You can see we have the roof on. This is looking from Westwood over to Edgewood, so you get an idea of the scale of the building. We're going to start pouring, I think, over spring break, so there'll be a concrete floor in there, then we can start with the interior finishes.
So, most of this area is tarped and then being heated, correct?
Correct. Right now, we're heating. And then, there's a great example of one of the heaters. It was kind of nice on this one, we were able to tap into the Westwood building to provide heat, so we didn't have to run a lot of gas in there. Just a couple more shots.
The roof is done on the Westwood, over connection?
There are some, there's still some minor roofing to be done, yeah.
Okay.
Redtail Ridge. Again, Redtail and Jeffers are mirror images, adding two classrooms, two kindergarten classrooms with restrooms and storage, and a collaboration space. Again, this was obviously over a week ago, roofing at Redtail.
So, it's snowblower, that's...
It looked like a snowblower.
It was. Got to get it off.
We don't need that anymore.
Again, we're putting, oh, I'm sorry, putting down the roofing membrane here. This, this roof is, again, like we talked about before, it's in the EPDM roof, which is like 20-year roof, but we built this so that we could build up if we have to, or when we have to. Jeffers pond, again, mirror image of Redtail Ridge. Some more work in there. Same crew's working on both buildings, so they're not quite the same progress. Hanging doors along the masonry walls. Some more interior shots. Mechanical work going in. Bridges ALC, there's the, I'm sorry, concept of the building. It's going to be a really great spot. Putting up walls right now. These are metal stud walls, so we're not getting a masonry wall on that building, and it should be just fine. Walls are going up. They have all the walls up now, and they are starting steel and stringers, or the rafters going up currently. Again, these are probably a week old. A lot of work every single day is going on. It's amazing to see the progress. Twin Oaks, so here's the addition that's going to be going on on the backside that we haven't started that yet. We have, in the locker rooms, we have started demolition down there, occupied, and staff have been, like at every one of our schools, the staff have been amazing to work with. We've got a head start down there that, that'll help us make sure we can open in the fall. There's some of the demo work. This is interesting here. This, this workman is operating a robot to do the demolition right here, so he's running actually a joystick.
Can you do a school tour back, get the students out there to see?
I don't have that many hard hats. I don't have that many hard hats. Again, another shot. It's amazing. They use water to keep the dust down, and they're just ripping. Hidden Oaks, we've started on Hidden Oaks on the east side of the building. We also have some remodel and cafeteria expansion and fitness or health room, and then the three, three in the back. There's a video attached, but I can't get onto it. But again, a lot of work. Crews have been great. Footings. There, they're pumping concrete into the footings. You can see they're pretty deep. Walls are going up. Scaffolding. That wasn't a nice day.
Or that dirt, so.
High school. This is the tech ed shop. Again, a lot of progress there. We were able to allow the kids to get through the construction site. Now, they're done for three weeks, so we can go in there, and we're running heaters in there, too. We'll put a sand cushion down and a concrete floor, and by the time they need to get back through there, we'll, we'll have a path for them. There's an outside view, and you can see how it ties into the building. Some roofing going on. Different type of roof at the high school. It's more of a traditional built-up roof. We haven't had, there's a hot kettle. We haven't had a lot of orders, problems at the high school. The air intakes are up on third floor, so we're not getting a lot of drift, not as challenge, not quite as challenging as it was at Westwood, Edgewood. There's the finished drift. Again, more scaffolding, block going up, drift to the third floor. It's actually, this is from the inside of the building, so you can see that on second floor, there's precast steel going up. They'll put another layer of the roof on top, and then they'll pull the scaffolding down for the plastic and the, or brick. Another shot from inside. Are there any, any questions on progress of construction?
I just have one. I know we've got the drainage at the ALC, that drainage pond, or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
How's that doing with all the snow melt and the ground melt?
It's not in yet, so it's all surface runoff now.
Okay. Is that causing any issues now?
It's not helping, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We're up and out of the ground there now, so it's not quite as, the issue as it was when we had footings, you know, the water would fill in there.
So, Jim, with the amount of construction that's happening, how frequently are you having construction meetings with our project managers from Nexus and all the partners, you and Marie Mullen?
Tuesdays and Wednesdays are pretty full. Mondays, you know, occasional meetings, but we're active every single day. I mean, we are at the sites every single day. Scheduled meetings, though, are primarily Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
From a timing standpoint, I knew we, with the vortex and all this, so we kind of got a little, you know, behind, aren't we?
We're catching up now.
We're catching up a little bit.
Yeah.
Everything seems to be...
Yeah, the guys are in better moods, everything's...
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We do have a couple shots for Hamilton Ridge to give you some more conceptual, or just sort of some personality of the building around the Hamilton Ridge name. Again, this is just an overview, I got things. This is just an overview of the footprint between the main entry cafeteria, you've seen all of this before, and the three towers. This is the second level, again, just as a reminder. But again, starting to look at some of the components on the outside for what the building looks like, according to the renderings, you know, obviously with the new name on there, between brick and just adding some different components. This here, I know, Mary, you've had questions in the past, too, at FLEURP, that is sort of central to the heating and cooling system of the building, that type of wall, and that's a key design, certainly as an Eastham building, finding sustainable ways to provide energy to the building is going to increase the life. It's also going to decrease the amount of cost in operating.
Yeah, it's going to really save the energy.
Again, little closer look. Here again is, I guess, from the southeast corner, looking in on those areas. This is around the backside of the building. Again, looking in, of course, you see some of the components for sunlighting. This area here is right off the Learning Commons or Media Center. We're anticipating not a paved space, but a outdoor space, either with probably some large rocks for classes to sit, have some outdoor learning out there, but certain, but more of a natural scale.
Yeah, there's a pea gravel or something like that.
This is from the bus loop looking in, so as students are dropped off from the bus, they enter one of the three towers where they're coming into the building, and then certainly, if there's any students coming in the front or for drop-off, they would come in on the front side.
And Jeff, that's where the playground's going to be, too?
This area right here is where the playground would be.
Okay.
And then, after buses leave, then that corral is off, and then this spot then is used for hard surface play for students as well. This is looking on, from the, from the west, looking east, you see the, the operation side, delivery, receivings area, and then you also see part of the gymnasium. So, you really see some components, particularly around Hamilton Ridge, you know, certainly kind of, kind of a theme around, you know, the, the sign of the times, I guess. You see some of the more natural building components put in that certainly adds some custom approaches to it, but we're not sacrificing on longevity or the components of those types of building materials.
That's correct.
So, as you walk in the main door, you also see some of those more wooden beams. The cafeteria is just to the left, and then the gymnasium's just, the door is there to the left as well. And as you keep walking, you go into the Learning Commons area and into the other parts of the school.
And you may want to point out that those, on the wall, those are sound absorption?
Yes, they are. Here's from the cafeteria, looking out. You see, you're getting the sunlight from the south, but also, too, you've got the main office there as well. We certainly see before and after-school programming with Kids Company, as well as any events at the school, coming in, having that main assembly area for programs, parent community events, and that will really fit with this design very well. From the Learning Commons, looking in, you see areas for, for students, small and whole group, a book room, which is where we will have the books for the Media Center, and then a learning stairs for small and large group or school assemblies. Some of these, you've already seen as board members, we're just adding a few more from context of color. This is looking back at the main office, restrooms there, close proximal to the, to the cafeteria. Again, some sound panels, some light coming in, natural lighting. And then, that's from the learning stairs, looking in, seeing what's happening in the And then, this is at the upper level, again, breakout space for small group, whole group learning. And then, this is... And then this is a learning studio entry, what classes would see on the outside, walking into where their classrooms would be. Another, another look. I think here's a third look. Right now, we're looking at orienting them by colors. And then once you get in, you see the open classrooms, the classrooms at the end, all around the Central Commons area. So again, the furniture in this, this place can move, in this studio can move from the resource area into the classroom, vice versa. Having open learning, small group learning and, and areas where it can be more private for students as well can be that experience. Here's a look at some of the furniture, some of the glass doors here that would slide. They can be open for full group, but also closed for a more quieter environment. Closer look at them. As you can see, a lot of furniture samples. We, we've gone through a fairly comprehensive input process of getting furniture components. Selecting furniture, we, as a side note, we've ordered furniture for the spaces that will be opening up this fall. There is quite a bit of lead time on, on getting that furniture, but for Bridges, Edgewood, Westwood, ALC.
Hidden Oaks, Twin Oaks.
Hidden Oaks, Twin Oaks. And so, we, we have yet to start, we have not had the actual furniture, furniture stakeholder groups on this site yet. But again, you see some of the examples, very consistent with what we're seeing from the other buildings as well.
And Jeff, didn't, weren't there samples kind of like already ordered and spread out with elementary and middle schools so they could try them out? Several have been eliminated completely now, right?
Yep. So what we, so the high school, we had a resource area where there was sample furniture brought in. Students were, I mean, students were using it all the time. So you can quickly see from the perspective of the kids and from the, from the staff, what was being used. And it was continually, and that's what you want to see. And then you want to have the conversation too about, certainly kids like it, they use it, you know, the durability of it, the ability of it to be cleaned, and some of those types of components. But each of our elementaries and middle schools had pieces delivered there. Students were using it, staff were looking at it. Again, getting some perspective and, you know, kind of trying it out. You know, what were kids gravitating towards, staff perspective and things like that. Overall, a very intensive process because teachers and staff are envisioning how it would be used in the class. Students are also, how are they envisioning students using it? Certainly in much different ways than what we have now. And then really kind of envisioning what that environment will be, and then kids giving that perspective about what they like. Yes, sir.
Any question? So on the samples of furniture, I'm assuming that anything that's fabric is going to be weeded out because this is cave five. We need to have something that's vinyl, cleanable, but no fabrics.
You must be in on the meetings. Because we certainly have had a lot of conversation about design of the furniture, as well as the material, so that it's cleanable. And also too, with some of the chairs, with some of the soft seating, making sure that there's not areas that garbage and things can be tucked in, or rather, it can fall all the way through. So our, our teams have been giving some very good feedback on that. And I know, Jim, you and Maureen have.
Yeah, I might have popped off once or twice.
You might, you had a heavy hand on fingerprints with some of those, those types of decisions and making sure that what we do have is durable and also cleanable and. One of the other things too is you can also see some built-ins, but mobile furniture too, or mobile storage areas. This is looking inside the kindergarten studio. You see something, some things here a little different. There's opportunities for being open, but from a kindergarten standpoint, we, we, we don't have everything necessarily open to the entire Commons area. Just from the standpoint of with kids coming in pre-K, having a space that can be a little bit more private for learning and also opportunities to go out into the re, excuse me, the resource area. And then we're building with the storage rooms, more of a connectivity so that teachers can partner in between the several of the, of the rooms that are in there. That.
Any other question?
That's our overview.
Floor question on that last slide. I'm assuming that that's not carpet.
This, this right here is not carpet?
All of that, right. This is a kindergarten space to, in the thinking of carpet.
So this is carpet, correct. So there's areas in, in the classrooms, even with Jeffers Pond and Redtail Ridge, where a portion of it is like a hard surface, like an LVT or like a vinyl tile for project use. And then there's also a carpet area where kids are sitting. And so, this is an area as far as pro, there would be project areas inside the classrooms. But as far as this, this would, all of our studios in the main areas are carpeted.
And the advantage Jeff's building has, it has a mudroom, so we're not tracking as quite as much dirt into the buildings as we would normally.
And that's also consistent too with our other, our other elementaries as well. Other questions?
Move on then to number two on our oversight of operations, Dr. Kevin Shepherd.
So Kevin, do you want a quick introduction or do you want to just jump right into it?
Sure.
So Kevin has been working a lot with our instructional groups, really our personalized learning framework. And so what he has tonight is a very robust presentation. And I think when you look in that, it's really a testament of the work that he's been leading and, and the group of teachers and stakeholders and administrators giving input on this process. So the intent tonight is really a broad overview, but to give a sense of really what are, where we're at with our research and where we're at with our steps moving forward. And I think the other component I just want to point out too is that, I know many of you as board members connect with building principals or Dr. Stallow on new tours. The important part, I just want to draw your attention, when you start seeing some of the things that are being presented and start reading the things in the, in the PowerPoint, you're going to start seeing those things. Start seeing students engaging in these ways. And that's intentional. And I think that's the, the importance of this work is that as we start to provide, as we continue to provide support to teachers and provide students voice and choice and agency in their learning, you're going to start seeing some of these components come to life, as you should. And, and that is truly where this gets to, is the student experience. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Kevin. I know you've done tremendous amount of work on this. And take it away.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening, board members, administration. I'm gonna introduce you to our Laker learning framework tonight, which is really our active vision for the future in terms of the student experience and learning experience in prior Lake Sabre Derry schools.
You're touching the, the laser.
What's, what's really exciting is this emerges from both a part of our vision, ten years or so in the last time the strategic plan was updated, and some of our strategic direction work in the most recent iteration. And we're really seeing this move from vision to a part of our ongoing directive work. It is also represented in this updated strategic directive from the November strategic plan update, really focusing on measurable student learning and reducing achievement gaps as we provide equitable student opportunities through personalized learning and student engagement. This started two years ago in the fall, really with this district priority work statement to develop and integrate an instructional excellence framework to pull different pieces of our work together. Really to provide coherence and connection for, for teachers, for students, for, for staff, for parents to see how these things connect, including our work with assessment, grading and reporting, standard-based grading and learning, MTSS, our Laker learning, our work around making and helping our students be future-ready. Educational equity, literacy and balance lit and ESTEM. The team here is a representation of district admin, building admin and teaching and learning. And we've had a lot of people involved in this work, both formally and informally over the last two years. I would put it's in the upper hundreds of people who really had their, their fingers on this work and had some input and feedback into it. This is a powerful graphic I like to reference. The big why here is to make connections and coherence between different initiatives or work that we've done in the district. So when we think about our ESTEM work and our AGR work and literacy and CLR and project-based learning, how do these things connect in terms of our vision for the student and learning experience in prior Lake Sabre Derry schools? When we started to work with the framework, we knew we couldn't just take something off the shelf because it has to have meaning for us in our district in terms of what we're doing and what we want the experience to be. So we started really with a lot of input from our instructional leaders, our principals, building leaders, peer coaches, our building instructional leadership teams, all of our teachers, to really ask them, what does excellent instruction look like, sound like and feel like at prior Lake Sabre Derry schools? We started there. And we went through an exercise, fifteen minutes or so, where all of our leaders and principals engaged in this and, and started to tell us some things about what do we want every classroom to be like in our district? Knowing that this has to be ours and, and match our vision. And then what are the essential conditions needed to make these possible? So we did some, we collected every poster and wrote down every word and did basically a qualitative analysis on this and looked for emerging themes. So what we found is that, you know, what, a lot of what was talked about and, and given as input in elementary was echoed in high school and in middle school across the district. Teachers want the student experience to be student-centered and engaging and active and hands-on, differentiated, personal, creative, interactive. A lot of those, those words and themes really came through across all levels. So we took those themes together and we cross-referenced it against our strategic plan and some other work of personalized learning in other districts and in the professional community. And really, these three themes emerged. We want learning in our classrooms to be personalized, purposeful and empower. And this is the Laker learning compass. It's a, it's a graphic we've developed, thanks to the communications department, to really give these ideas a home and to connote direction and guidance and for our district and for learning. When we think about personalized, three big areas, profiles, paths and proficiency-based progress. Profiles, really if you boil it down, it's all about getting to know our kids. And knowing them deeply in terms of what they bring to us, in terms of skill, strengths or perhaps deficits. What, how do they learn best? You know, do they learn collaboratively best? Do they learn in, in smaller groups? Do they learn actively? What are some of those, those traits they bring? What are some drivers? What are some things kids aspire to be or aspire to do that may help drive or motivate them to, to engage in their learning more deeply? When we know about our kids, we can customize their paths a bit more. We can give them some voice and choice in how they learn and how they demonstrate their learning, rather than that being directed solely by the teacher. And then when we think about proficiency-based progress, this is perhaps one of the most challenging to our current system in public education, is that it's really focused on mastery of standards. And so that students can progress based on their mastery rather than just time. Because right now, a lot of systems are based on time. You spend X number of days and weeks in second grade, you move on. And along the way, you've mastered a lot, maybe mastered not others. But thinking about ways to say, if a student has already mastered the first grade standards in first grade, what does he or she do next? You know, obviously, the next step is the second grade standards and moving on and going deeper. When we think of purposeful instruction, we really want it to be linked between outcomes, assessments and learning experiences so that that's coherent. We want teachers to really get skilled and be skilled at giving really specific feedback to kids so that they can sharp their own learning and set goals and using learning targets really as a foundational piece to help transfer some ownership to kids so that they can understand what they're supposed to be learning and do some self-assessment and ownership around that. When we think of empowerment, we want students to have a voice and a choice in the what, the how and the where and the when of learning. With the constant being learning and some of those being variables. We want students to intentionally have experiences where they can build some efficacy. The best thing we can give our kids is the ability to learn. You know, knowing that the future in, in ten years, let alone twenty or thirty, is something we can't really predict. But we know that they need to be able to learn new skills and knowledge in their lives. So really intentionally giving them opportunities to try, to fail, to coach, reflect and then persist. And learn again and, and kind of go on from there. So we want to intentionally empower students to set goals, co-create learning experiences and demonstrations of learning. When we think about this, it represents a continued shift of the role of the teacher. From really a font of knowledge of, I know everything and I'm gonna impart it upon you to, we are here together to co-create learning as, as, as learners and as teachers. And at the end of the spectrum, we look at how do kids and students really drive their own learning so that they take away some of those skills that we really want them to after thirteen or more years in the district? What this does not represent is bad to good. So what we really want to empower and, and promote our teachers to be able to do is dance between these different levels when it's appropriate. First week of kindergarten, yeah, there's gonna be some more teacher-directed learning than that, you know, maybe the, the tenth week or the twentieth week. And the same time, same thing with high school, any level. But we want to really empower our teachers to have the skills to give kids the keys to their learning when it's right and appropriate. So I, I'm not gonna get too deep into these specifics, but you'll see for each aspect of, of our framework, it's broken down into specific things that teachers can do in their classrooms and in with, with students and learners to promote a learner-centered and a learner-driven type of learning. So related to knowing our students and their cultures, knowing, creating authentic assessment opportunities, showing connections beyond the classroom, really knowing our standards really well so that we can personalize education based on that. Using assessment really clearly and transparently so that kids know where they are at any moment. Providing feedback and then really thinking about how we use space. You know, Mr. Homberg really talked about the new elementary in specific and how different use of space there. How do we both empower teachers to use that space intentionally, but then empower kids to kind of have that metacognition about how they can use space and why they're doing it? You know, if they need to find a quiet place to do their math, why? Because that promotes their kind of continued growth as an efficacious learner. Thinking about instructional materials, learning experiences, then really, you know, that growth mindset. Just being able to try, to fail, to persist, to try again and, and learn from that experience. This is not a one-year work, nor is it a two-year, three-year work. This is long-term, multi-year work. And so we know in order for these student experiences to happen, we need to really help our teachers learn how to do it. So I'll reference professional learning in that we're, we're really thinking about continuous and job-embedded professional learning for our teachers and staff to get good at some of these skills aligned with the framework. So we will start with a professional learning self-assessment each year, where teachers really honestly say, this is where I'm at. And teachers can, we're, we're building up a personalized and competency-based system where there's gonna be some choice of pathways. And then every year, maybe they demonstrate competency, they, they feel confident with it, they choose a good pathway. That change will hopefully result in a change in teacher practices that we can see through walkthroughs and other observations. And that'll result in a change in the student experience that Mr. Homberg referenced as well. We are partnering with the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. We have a grant through them to really rethink what professional learning means in schools. And what that really gives us is a little chunk of money, but also connection to a broad variety of districts and organizations that are doing some similar work. And there's some, some kind of big names in the, in the field in this, including Learning Forward, High Tech High Institute, personalized learning, and a few others who are really digging into this to think about what, how can this look different? If we want our kids to have a personalized learning experience, we have to provide those for teachers as well, so they can see it. And when we think about bringing everybody along, we have a lot of teachers here who are already trying some of these things and working on it. So continuing to feed them, continuing to build on some of the people that are open to it, but maybe not quite there, opening the mindset for some of these people at the end and thinking really across the whole board. Because again, we don't want this just to be an experience for some kids in some classrooms. We want it to really help all teachers move along in this journey. There's two big pieces. We're thinking mindset and skillset. So we're, we're working on opening the mindset of teachers and a lot of our staff by school visits, personalized learning events, teacher grants, opening doors at a basic level, lean them, go, see that teacher down the hall, try in this out, see what it's like. And then focus on the skillset part by a really focused competency-based system to help again, everyone move along. Knowing that teachers are all in different places. You know, they're not one size fits all, so our system can't be. And then really connecting dots with peer coaching, observations and build. And then really connecting dots with peer coaching, observations, and building PD. And one of the ways we're doing that is some initial learning with our principals, teaching and learning, and peer coaches around personalized learning. What does it mean for us? What does it mean in the district? And how do we all support it? So when we think about metrics, some things we should expect to see, we hope that increased competence and competence with some of the practices will come through in that self-assessment yearly, accompanied by changes in observable teacher practices that we can see through some of our walkthroughs. When we think about the student experience, increase in observed engagement and participation that we can see through the walkthrough, decrease in gaps in student achievement, multiple measures for that, as well as the overall student achievement, and then improvement in measures aligned in the student survey. One of the other things we talked about in district curriculum advisory committee just now, too, is thinking about the broader, some kind of measure around those broader skills that we hope students to take away, like efficacy, like critical thinking, like, you know, so we're still wrestling with that. We know it's an intended outcome, but we're not quite settled on how to measure that. But these are some of the things we'll look at year to year as we evaluate, are we on the right track? So a lot of information quickly. Any questions or comments?
Kevin, if you could, I'd appreciate it if you would just clarify what you said in our curriculum meeting, which I thought was critical. You compared professional development to professional learning, and you made a really good statement.
So we look back here, the kind of the broader national discussion on professional development has really moved away from using that word towards professional learning, in that professional development implies that teachers are widgets that get stamped in a PD session and then come out changed on the other side. When we know that sitting in a room for a period of time does not mean that you've done anything or actually learned anything necessarily, but professional learning really implies continuous job-embedded learning, and it's about embracing our role as, you know, principals, teachers, administrators, that we're all learners. We are always learners, and we can't ever stop being learners, because the world will pass us by.
Any other questions?
I guess, you know, this is kind of a lot.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And I do, I mean, I think, I mean, as it's very critical to the district and the future success of the district, it's really this. And I'm just wondering, from a standpoint of time, like, I mean, if I, honestly, if I was a teacher, I might be slightly overwhelmed, thinking that I'm gonna have to, like, learn all this. I mean, like, are we, is this, I mean, have the teachers, like, totally embraced this? I mean, like, are we, do we give them enough time to do this kind of thing? How are we gonna, you know, embed it within the schedule to get it so that we're moving along and that people aren't feeling overwhelmed, or I don't get this, this is too, you know, this is way different than what I've taught for twenty years and it's fine? You know what I mean? So it just seems to me that it's a lot. And, you know, what are gonna be the challenges and how are we gonna handle some of that? I mean, I think the number one for me is time. We only have so many PD things in the calendar, and if you're hitting this every couple months, it's not really gonna, like, fire us off. So this has to be like an everyday kind of thing.
Absolutely. And so, and I agree with you completely, and I also agree with, it's, a part of it's the packaging, you know? We were gonna say, hey, we're gonna do this thing, and next year, you're gonna have it all, right? Great. No way. I mean, and that's not realistic, nor is that, you know, anything that could actually happen. So really embracing it, like, you know, some other work, that this is many, many years. This is five, six, seven, eight years' worth of continual work across the district, and embracing it in ways that perhaps we haven't embraced completely already, you know? So we're thinking of ways to embed this with, and connect it with learning teamwork, you know, and personal, personal learning goals. So looking at all the structures we have where teachers are together and learning things, and how do we, how do we help to focus on that? How do we really connect the dots with peer coaching? How do we really connect the dots with administration, our observations with our administrators? And connect the dots with every period of staff development we have, whether that's back to school, whether that's staff meetings, whether that's the two PD days we have, the early releases, all of those things, and just being really intentional to map it out over a lot of years, you know? So I completely agree with you, and a part of it is the, kind of the packaging of this is long-term work.
The umbrella one, kind of summed it up, because it's before we had a lot of different initiatives, and now we're putting it all together.
Yeah. I would add, too, that within the systems, you know, is particularly with this continuum, I know a lot of the curriculum work with curriculum review, you know, we bring teams of teachers in and they're content area specialists, or they're really, they know math standards, or they, and you start building on their areas of expertise. And when you start building on their areas of expertise, you can start to open up some doors into new, you know, activities, assessments, you know, and again, coming back, you're right, frequently either through their learning teams or through their, the time that they're planning together, that how do you build on that and start, you know, continuing to move through these different areas? Because I really like what you said, Kevin, this is not like good to great. Our teachers are gonna have to be really well on all of this continuum, because not all students are going, not all students are gonna automatically become learner-driven by the time they're twelfth grade. You know, we have to meet kids where they're at, we have to continue to provide them support and provide them experiences, and, you know, teacher-directed as well as learner-centered, help them reflect, help them to get to know themselves, and then give them experiences so that they can continue to get those experiences, to move them to areas. Because as we know as kids, as they move out of the high school, you know, we're preparing them for occupations where they're gonna have to have at least experiences in some of those larger skills and the abilities to work with others, and really get to know themselves, and how they are productive and how they can contribute to a job or the local economy.
One of the things we were also really intentional to do here, some of these things, especially here, are things many, 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 to most of our teachers already do. So it's, a part of it was also, yes, defining our kind of vision for the future and how we want to be able to build these skills, but saying, let's just coalesce around what we define as good, as good, you know, tier-one teaching in Plalis Elementary Schools, you know, so, you know, using learning targets. That's been worked for years. So not, well, definitely looks like a lot. Some of the teachers would say, like, oh, yeah, I can do that. We're just gonna keep doing it? Okay, great. So it's not, not every part of it is.
We do. I guess that was my question. A lot of these things, over the years, I've heard before, putting it all into this kind of perspective is helpful. We're not completely starting a whole new level.
Right.
To, you know, give to the teachers, and hoping all the peer coaching and everything will help, you know, embed everything together to work together. So it's not a whole completely new concept, maybe defining it better.
Right.
And, you know, you said eight years, but it seems to me it's gonna be ongoing all the time, because new teachers come in, always obviously new students, and new ways to teach, keep changing, so.
Absolutely.
Just another little, kind of to piggyback on that, you know, given the fact that it's a longer period of time, and we have test scores, okay, so that's one way to measure. But are there other ways as to which we can measure that this is working? And then I guess I would challenge you to, like, figure out what those are, because as a board member, I'm gonna sit here in another year and say, okay, where are we on this thing? And how are we doing? And how do we know we're measuring, you know, success? How are we measuring our success?
Could I piggyback on that question before you answer? And that was my more general question, is that, as someone who's studied this for, you know, ten to decades and loves this, if standardized testing and the testing we use were making kids smarter, they'd be getting smarter. Are you finding you're really at a friction point between these more authentic assessments and being able to demonstrate? And what is the country as a whole, we're still sort of hyping on in terms of numbers and data, and is this helping us as a district find our way through that? So, you know, the answer, Stacy said, we're still gonna have to be accountable, but if we're talking about growth mindset, for example, teaching kids to fail and be creative thinkers, that is not a multiple-choice test either. And so just to build on what you're saying, that's, how are you finding that in the national scene and in the district in terms of balancing that?
You know, we just went to an event organized by ADINA, Eastern Carver, Farmington, another small district. Basically, it was a big meetup wrestling around these big issues. I didn't say anybody's battled in, but we're all looking for those measures. Because when we think about this, you know, we have another document, kind of the logic model of this, like, if we do this, we hope the outcome is this, you know? And a lot of that is some of those softer skills that we know are really incredibly valuable in the workplace and in life. And yet, how do we measure it? So I don't have, I don't have a perfect answer for that yet, but we will get something. We will have a measure, whether it's some focus group with students, whether it's some specific alignment to the student survey, whether it's, you know, I think we can get a lot through periodic walkthroughs, frequent walkthroughs, go see what the classroom looks like, you know, go see what's happening. But I also think we, I definitely wanna find ways to elevate the student voice in this, saying, what is your experience changing? Do you like it? What do you not like? You know, and that, there's no real fancy way to do it besides asking kids, you know, systematically, you know, through something like focus groups or something like that, but I agree with you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Kevin, you have the next topic as well.
The next topic here is around the IDEA Doc. So this was an initiative started three years ago, I wanna say, really connected to the core value of innovation and expanding innovative programming to meet all the needs. So to bring everyone back to it, the purpose was to really empower PLSA stakeholders, student staff, parents, community, to propose and develop innovative ideas and ensure a continuous innovation improvement around that. So this was really about the pipeline. How do we create a pipeline of ideas to encourage our staff and our teachers specifically to be, to embrace innovation, change systematically across the district? So we launched the IDEA Doc in October 2018 as a part of a, we're in a network of other districts that are doing this kind of work, so we had a lot of support and collaboration with them. We launched in October. We had three weeks for idea submission open to anyone in the district. We had a period of a week of voting, and this was kind of a pair-wise voting process where people compared two ideas against each other, and then the computer, or the system, the algorithms balanced those out across the system. The results were announced in November and January. We had an IDEA workshop. I'll tell you a bit about more in that in a second. And now we're continuing to support and develop those ideas. So this is what it looks like for teachers and staff. It's a pretty simple portal. It's built by Optum, UHG's United Health Group's Innovation Arm. So they built and supported it, and we got to customize the look and feel. Teachers basically came to a site like this, where they could submit an idea by answering these specific questions, you know? So really looking at what is the problem, opportunity, and need, not just, it'd be nice if, but what's the actual underlying problem? Who's affected? What are we doing today? Why is your solution better than what we're currently? So through that, there was, you know, a place where people could comment and reply, so it encouraged a lot of really good, both inter-building and inter-district discussion around these ideas. We had a really great turnout. So in this first year, we had absolutely no idea what to expect. So we might have been, I would have been fairly happy with fifteen ideas this first year, I just had no idea. But we were really overwhelmed by a very positive buzz around this this year, around, we had a hundred thirty-five ideas, a hundred twenty, a hundred twelve, sorry, just different people, including custodial staff, teachers, administrators, a lot of different people, submitting ideas to the system with eight hundred ninety-four comments and forty-seven thousand votes. So this is even people who didn't submit ideas got active in the commenting and the voting. The ideas, and we were very transparent that we were going to advance the top one big, two medium, and three small ideas to the IDEA workshop. And we were also very transparent that that does not mean, and here's the big check, that this means you're advancing to the workshop, and we will go from there. So the top big idea was more mental health support in the schools for our students, submitted by a Tufts teacher. There was two medium ideas around professional development, which we're working on, and accessible play for all, and a few small ideas around rethinking parent connections and assessment days, flexibility and location for grading days, and play for all by a kindergarten teacher. So in January, we held an IDEA workshop, really centered around the human-centered design process, and we partnered with Flipgrid, who let us use their space for free, which is really great. And between November, the results getting announced, and the workshop, we asked the IDEA leaders to go and empathize with the people your idea affects. So if you are, you know, if you have an idea about, you know, mental health supports or social emotional learning supports for kids, go talk to kids, talk to parents, talk to teachers, talk to other people who your idea affects, to bring that to the process. They went through, we took them through various activities to kind of help them think through their idea and the problem that's underneath it. And what we found happened with a lot of the ideas, and that one in particular, is when you unwrap the idea, maybe the initial gut solution was, we need more counselors and social workers, but when we pushed them to really identify the problem, they said, we really need to improve how all teachers build relationships and kind of with kids. So that opens up a lot of different ways to do things, you know? If that's the underlying problem, let's get after that. This may be something that in the future we look at, but this has to come first. And so what went from a probably a few hundred thousand dollar idea right now is, you know, let's have some PD around how we, you know, build relationships with kids in the buildings. So some quick updates. So in the big idea, they've met with the middle school admin, who are planning some next steps, really with some learning about trauma-informed schools, how do we help best support kids in every classroom? Voice and choice in PD, we're working on that quite heavily through that grant I mentioned and some other ways. Accessible play for all, they've met with the buildings ground staff to think about what's possible, what are some of the pinch points? And think in the small ideas, that one is in progress and working on it. Some of these small ideas are really just process changes, you know? It's like not necessarily a big money outlay, but hey, let's think about how we do that differently. And then the work from home grading days, that is a pilot, has been developed, and we're looking at a possible trial of that in fall. In the workshop, we really pushed people to develop the smallest possible version of the idea that they could test out. Not to think about, how do you scale this to every single person by tomorrow, but think about, what is the smallest kernel of your idea that we can test out and see if it's doing what you hope it does? There were also, you know, in the process, a lot of ideas where you're like, yeah, of course we'll do that, you know? So some ideas that didn't necessarily advance to the workshop stage, but visible safety, these are bright vests for new supervisors, so kids could see them out. Yeah, sure. You know, maybe it'll cost twenty bucks, and if that improves the experience for the supervisors or the kids, great. Growing PDL is something we're doing to support teachers implementing project-based learning. Lakers Laugh at Scholarships, a variety show that's in process and in the works. Win Time at Middle School, works, there's some work around that. Recycling composting education for DSC staff, we just did it. So there have been some things that are low or no-cost ideas that we're just saying, yep, check them off, of course we'll do them. And personalized PD is another big one. Questions or concerns, comments?
I guess I just have one. I mean, this was kind of the theme of the year, ideas matter. And since it's having such a positive effect, is it something that's gonna be ongoing in the IDEA now?
Definitely plan to. One of the ideas in the IDEA Doc was to have the IDEA Doc all year long, you know, which would be very hard to manage, we're not gonna do that, but that, the buzz, and this is kind of anecdotal and a lot based on the feedback from teachers, is they love it, they want it to come back, and they want it to continue. A lot of it really is just communication, you know, just fostering that, hey, how, what if we tried this differently? And connecting people across buildings, across levels, that this, it just makes it easy to do. So we're absolutely.
When you do this next year, would you take into consideration the different areas that were not chosen this year?
You know, we have been pretty transparent about it, that this is the will of the crowd, so to speak. So everyone has an opportunity to vote. We had something like forty-seven thousand votes, and we take the top X.
I'm just thinking that some groups are smaller than other groups, and.
You know, one of the things.
Unless they can vote more than one.
Absolutely. One of the things we did consider, and we may consider it again, again this year, if we got fifteen ideas, we're gonna be like, great, great start. But with a hundred thirty-five, so some other districts that are a little further along in this, separated by school, so maybe that could be something, maybe we'll separate by level or something like that. It may be something we consider. That is some of the feedback we've heard from teachers, but like, you know, I loved hearing the ideas, but I don't know about what's a great idea for me to hear, you know? So that may be something we consider with the volume that we have.
Well, I think.
Or the profession, I'm just gonna say, you know, unless you walk in their shoes, you don't really know. But there are some smaller groups that maybe have a great idea, but their voice is too small to be heard.
Right, right.
I was just gonna say, like, just like American Idol and The Voice, right? Sometimes they come back. I think you should encourage people. I think you should encourage people, just because your idea didn't proceed last time, don't not submit it again this year, because that might happen. Love, love what's going on with the process. The big idea, specifically being counselors, social workers. That was a big idea that came from the community meeting on the strategic plan. I do think, I'm a, I'm a both and kind of guy. And I love that ultimately the end result of that was, let's try to make sure we've all got better connections to our students. I think that should be happening. And I'll also say both, and I think a lot of people here would like to see us find a way to get more staff in those areas.
And I think, I don't want to imply that that idea is like done, you know, necessarily. But that's, when we, when we really pushed them to say, start with the smallest piece, you know? And then let's think about what's next. But I agree with you, because, you know, the first gut is like, whoa, more counselors and social workers. Everyone can say, you know, that could benefit kids. But let's, let's unwrap the problem and then start building it up again. And I think the strategic direction work around social emotional learning absolutely will drive this as well. We know, we know it's a need. We know it's a need in K-12. I mean, the community's echoed it, the board has echoed it, our teachers have echoed it, so.
I was actually going to piggyback on what you said with the big idea, because I mean, it's been discussed at the county level, the community level, it gets brought up everywhere. I've never seen a place where they haven't said, we have enough because we're, our ratios are so small. But I want to go back and kind of talk about how that process with the big idea. Because if, if you're saying something that obviously has been repeated so much, and like you said, you want to start with the smallest, is there going to be some negative effect by taking that obvious need and pushing it back down onto the teachers to do even more work? Because I, you know, and I understand that everyone needs more connection or whatever, but somehow or another, the increased mental health support may be interpreted as, okay, I put this in, I, you know, put my name on it, I'm asking for it, and what you did is you pushed it back down to be still my, still more work for me, still more emphasis on me doing work because we don't have the extra staff. So even if that wasn't the big idea, could the way it got shrunk down like that actually have a negative effect? And say, well, I tried.
I, I hear you. You know, and that is something we are, we are wary about, you know? And especially with that team. And I think that, that team has a, a middle school teacher, a social worker, a counselor on it. And so we didn't tell them that, you know? And that's, there is some, some kind of magic to this process that when they, when they do it and they really talk about it together, because that's, that's where their next step ended up. Them talking about it like, and they're, again, they're not saying, yeah, that this would benefit too, having more social workers and counselors, but we need to start here. And I think as we think about district-wide, about building up that whole system, we, we need, we need to think about it systematically. And how do we bring that support to every kid, every classroom? And then knowing that some kids are going to need more support, definitely. And build that up systematically, which I think, again, will tell your work.
See, I like that they came up with, with that for a solution. Not that it's the only solution, because I do think we need the counselors. But the teacher is with the student every day. They're always in contact with them. I don't, you know, with some, we need to support and train the teachers for whatever they need to do, what they need to do. But they see them every day. So I think that's a better contact, whereas the counselor isn't really in contact with them all the time, all the time. So I'm kind of glad that they came up with that, actually.
It, it was, you know, pretty powerful. And, and they did it by basing it off of, let's talk to teachers, parents, kids about what's your experience like? And when they really dug into that, that's where they said, yeah, this is where we need to start, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Next strategic direction is to do with technology.
As Marcus is coming up, we're going to segue from personalized learning and engaging students and staff and the student experience to more of a technical look at some of the equipment we have, and also looking forward to, you know, devices and mobile devices at Pride Lake Savagery Schools, so.
Good evening, School Board members, administration, members of the audience. How's everybody doing? I walk a lot, so I'm going to be moving around. My name is Marcus Malas. I'm the Director of Technology for Pride Lake Savagery Schools. And I'm here to present all things mobile devices, what's going on in our district, current devices, both student and staff. So this is a PDF, so you don't have to print out this kind of stuff. Do that. What we support, I have a team of 12. Those 12 team members support a lot of stuff, a lot of equipment, both hardware and software in our district. Two of those team members are, are district print shop. So they're busy managing and running the actual print, print shop. And the rest of us are in charge of everything you see here. 1.3 million square feet of space and growing. Right, Joe?
Yeah.
The number will change. Yep. Thank you. Same with the student population, it's 8,700 and growing. 700 plus staff members. We have hardware, desktops, laptops, mobile devices, wireless access points, network switches, file servers and voice over IP phone systems. And then for software, we support instructional system on a basis. Last year I came to you with a big project with the wireless access points. And we have updated that over the summer, and that has gone really, really well. We're thrilled with the room of product. Through a lot of different avenues, like the idea doc and talking to staff members, initiatives that are coming down from multiple sources. This is what we're hearing from our stakeholders, is that staff want a mobile computer solution. You look around, a lot of people are on mobile devices here at the table tonight. A lot of people gravitate towards an iPad or a laptop because they can take it with them. They want more instructional tools at all grade levels. That's nothing new, that's not groundbreaking. It's just that with more and more innovation that comes out, we want the instructional tools to be able to run it. Staff want new classroom designs with flexible learning spaces. Jim gave a presentation earlier tonight, talking about the additions and then the new elementary. And you saw in that, there's a lot of flexible learning spaces. It's hard to be an instructional leader in today's classroom when you're up here, if you're the sage on the stage, and I'm always using this. It's really tough to do, and we get away from that. We try to get teachers out into what I'm doing right now, is I'm working with kids, small group instruction. We have the flexibility to be able to get away from a tight corner in your desk, with a desktop, and get out and, and work with those students in multiple levels. Desktops are great, and they're tied to our infrastructure. And I want to speak to that tonight, too, of what, what we're going to do with our desktops. But we're looking for different ways to deliver instruction. A big one, this is really big. Staff want additional tools to manage devices. If we have over 9,300 iPads in classrooms and half that number of Chromebooks, staff want really streamlined ways to manage those devices to keep kiddos on task. And got to guide instruction. District is also exploring e-learning opportunities. I thought I heard Kevin say earlier in one of his presentations that we're looking into some e-learning opportunities, whether that's for inclement weather days or construction days. I mean, they're, they're very separate, and I don't want to muddy waters tonight about that, but e-learning is for inclement weather and the construction, digital learning days are different.
I think too, the systems that you referenced, like with CSO, School Edge, Infinite Campus, those are the infrastructure, infrastructure products that our staff can work with students, remote, small, flexibly, large group, small group. And so we have the capability, we're just not at a point where we're really utilizing those tools to those full capability. And, you know, I think as we saw with what Kevin shared with our teacher-directed, learner-centered, learner-directed, is that we want to provide this experience for kids, having those infrastructure to manage, and offer those opportunities is what we're hearing. And then also too, with all the building we're, we're doing, number one thing staff are saying is, we really, if we're, if we're asking kids to collaborate and learn in different ways, we as teachers also need that ability as well. So I think that's a segue as you, as you move forward with your presentation.
Good one, thank you. Let's look at some totals. iPads, district-wide, here are our totals. Legacy iPads are at around 1,400, and I'm going to speak more about legacy iPad. Those are iPad fours, and they were built back in 2012, is when they originally came out. Elementary iPads, we have a two-to-one, we're anywhere from 12 to 15 iPads in the elementary classroom in a charging cabinet. Close 2,400 of those. Middle school iPad carts are designated for sixth and, excuse me, sixth and seventh grade. The eighth graders, eight through 12, have a one-to-one initiative. And then staff iPads were around 708 currently, as far as how many staff iPads we have. A little further breakdown about that. Here's what, a little granular, I won't go into all the details, but as I mentioned, there's about 12 to 15 iPad classrooms, iPads per classroom. They're iPad Mini twos. So if you're, if you're into the what type of device we have where, those are iPad Mini twos. The legacy iPads I referenced are iPad fours. We can't upgrade them past 1033. So anytime a device hits like a point where we can't upgrade it, and it's, now I think I just read 12.2 is coming out tonight. I think they're rolling it out right now. So these are end of life, these will be pulled, these iPads are coming out of our district. They will be sold, or we'll earn a credit for them through one of our many vendors that we work with. As far as, we'll get something for these iPads, but they're end of life and they're coming out this year, this summer. Staff iPads are fifth and sixth gen. That's, I brought devices, I will show and tell this. Some of you are working on those, and that's what, what we have in front of you right here, is a fifth and sixth gen. Uh, let's see. Chromebooks, one grade, one card per grade level. There's Samsung ones or twos. They're smaller form factor, but they're still working. And, and we still can upgrade them and get them licensing through the G-suite. And then there's two Chromebook carts per media center, and those are the HP G5s. Those are larger 13-inch screen. Moving on to the middle school, here's what we have. Eighth grade, one-to-one, fifth and sixth gen iPads. We have 15 iPad carts per site. Those are for sixth and seventh graders. And then staff iPads, fifth and sixth gen, and then six Chromebook carts per site as well at the middle school. High school, nine through 12 is one-to-one, fifth and sixth gen iPads. Staff have fifth and sixth gen, and they have 20 Chromebook carts there. That number continues to grow. Every time we take out a wired lab, they need something to replace that and use. So we have a lot of these pod labs at the high school that were wired labs. And the trend is now, those are becoming flexible learning spaces, and they want Chromebook carts there instead of desktops. So that's why that number's larger there, larger school, too. Here's what we are proposing. I'm here tonight to talk about staff computers. And what we're proposing is that licensed staff point five or higher receive a new laptop. That laptop is an Apple MacBook Air. That is this device. I'm going to ask you to take a look at and pass it down. That is the device that my team reviewed. We had a number of quotes. It's probably in, you can open it and it'll be like in setup mode, which is fine. I need it back tonight, too, so it's. Make sure I get that back. We reviewed a lot of different products. And we, we, what we did was, excuse the pun, but we wanted apples to apples. So what I did is I had my team spec out an Apple MacBook. And they, actually, they gave me three options. And then I had the team say, okay, go on to the Windows PC side of things and talk to our HP vendors and see with comparable specs, what, what is, what is available. We have the price point, and the price points were very, very similar. In fact, a lot of the Elite Books that we have priced out came in higher than what this MacBook Air is. I think one of the reasons for that, it had a larger solid state drive. I'm sure we're getting charged for that.
What is the solid state drive and the memory on?
I have the specs coming up here for this, for that device, absolutely. This, I don't want to lose this either, is that our PC desktops that we own in the classrooms, the Z230s and the 240s would remain in the classrooms for a number of, I think, good reasons. It's already attached to our infrastructure. This is a good example. This, this desktop is attached to our infrastructure. In this case, it's a projector, shot-in-screen, and a smartboard, and that monitor. It's already attached. We already own, we have tools like Mirroring 360 that allows us to take our screens on our MacBooks or our iPads and share our screen, screencast it to that device, which would then in turn showcase it on all the attached devices. So laptops are different. I mean, it's a change for people, and there are Windows fans out there, and I'm one of them. I, I like HP, I love the Z230s and 240s, a great desktop. The idea is to leave those, that equipment in place. It's attached to our infrastructure. It's something that is kind of, it's known quantity. It's something that people, hey, if I need to jump on the Windows side of thing to do something, it's still available to me. Here are the specs. I'll let you read those, and if you have any questions, just.
So as, as Marcus, one of the things that, from a funding source standpoint, our desktops, we've, we've had on an ongoing lease with a purchase. So the funding that you're seeking tonight is a continuation of those funds? But since we have more staff than 708, it would be slight, it would be slightly more is what we're, would be a slight budget increase overall.
It is a budget increase because we're asking for more devices. And the price per unit is slightly, but it is more devices. So that was a three-year lease with an option to buy at fair market value for the desktops. And we, we implemented that fourth year buyout this year. So they're, they're four years old, we, we plan on getting a lot more years on them. Any questions about the specs?
So this would go to staff?
Staff, licensed staff point five or higher. So basically the same staff that have a staff iPad would receive a laptop. Now, as you, it went around, I don't know if it made its way all around.
I got it.
USB-C or Thunderbolt 3. Okay, that's the new standard. That, that device has two ports on it. All of our stuff is running on, hopefully at this point, HDMI, but there's still VGA out there. So welcome to the world of the dongle. I mean, that's just the reality of it, is here you go. So you, you, you need one. And until everybody goes to this technology, it's, it's S. So there's a slight additional cost, but it's a reality. Same thing happened when we went to HDMI and everybody had VGA out there.
So we would anticipate that staff then would be using Mirroring 360 with their laptops so they could teach them anywhere in the classroom.
Exactly.
Small group, whole group.
Yep.
And then the HP desktops would be in the room as a way for maybe staff to use it if it's a better product or for what they intend to use, or if you're a staff member that does not have, is not point five or higher, and you still need some connectivity.
Yep, you have access to the technology, absolutely.
So I have a question about the office software that would go on it. Are we going to use, utilize our Microsoft licenses, like MS 16 on these, the latest one?
Yep.
Okay.
So we have the ESS agreement with them, so we have rights to upgrade. Yeah, so we would, it'd be an Office suite, I mean, Office 365 available, and install local, too. And, and GSweet, so we'd have both. GSweet's web-based, but yeah, we'll have the full Office suite on, on the devices as well. Just show a question?
Just wish the kids could get some, too.
Our kids need to have keyboard experience, they're not getting it, they're getting thumb experience. The biggest drawbacks of the iPads, and now we've got an aged fleet on those. And I, I can just hear it next time, they're going to be asking, asking to get rid of all those iPads.
I don't know if I, I would come to the board and say, I need to get rid of all these iPads. I think that it would be a conversation that I would have with multiple stakeholders, teachers, student groups, teaching and learning, senior leaders, say, where are we at as a district? What, what are our needs, what are our priorities? What's the best tool to deliver the instruction at the right time? So I hear what you're saying.
We're probably invested in the iPads.
We are, and I absolutely agree with you. We are invested, but we're also have a lot of Chromebooks in the district, too. And that's, you know, that's, we've always said, whenever I come to the board and say, the right tool for the job. I, I mean that, and it's, if the right tool for your job at that time is to hop on a Chromebook for document, document creation, that's why they're there. If you want to be app-centric and you're doing something in the app world that requires you to have that iPad, it's there. So we, we support a lot, as you can see on these slides, because is it easier to support one product? Absolutely. Is it the right thing to do to support as many tools as possible that we can afford, that's fiscally responsible, that gives students? Is it the right thing to do to support as many tools as possible that we can afford, that's fiscally responsible, that gives students the best educational experience? My answer to that is yes. We're in it for the kids, whatever the best tool for that situation is. So we do support a lot of devices. That's, that's a change in IT.
I'd like you to speak about one of the benefits of the support. I mean, with the, with the recommendation coming forward tonight with, with the Mac versus the HP is the ability to be able to manage those with our wireless access points. Can I, can you, can you speak to that a little bit?
Can, uh, thank you for asking the question. There are two major, I see, there's two huge benefits to having a Mac laptop as opposed to an HP in this, in our district. Number one is we can leverage JAMP with it, which is our MDM, our mobile device management solution for pre-stage enrollment and ongoing maintenance. And so we use that tool to get these set up. You open them up, you go through a setup wizard and it's enrolled, it's managed by my team, my team of two people that are in charge of mobile devices. Um, the second piece is that with the Mac, the new macOS, it now has Apple Classroom embedded in it so that you can control the iPads in your classroom. It makes a Bluetooth handshake and then it transfers over to Wi-Fi. So use, and we're piloting Apple Classroom right now at the high school and a couple middle, at both middle schools. Where teacher has the device, he could use it on iPad or now on macOS. And I can kid sign into my class and I have complete control of those devices. I can see what's going on on their screens. I can lock out the screen if I need, hey, everybody, eyes on me, hit the lock button and they're, they're locked out of the device. It has a lot of functionality and I won't go to all of it tonight, but it allows you to do a lot of really easy management from, from wherever you are in the classroom. Now, you can't be down the hall and do it, it has to make that handshake and it, and it'll drop off once, once the kids leave. So I'm not going to control Johnny's device when he's in fourth hour if I had the first hours. So it's kind of works that way. It would kind of fun, but yeah. Get labeled as big brother. Okay, here's, here are the lease details. We, we decided we had three lease quotes, um, Apple, HPE and this Providence Capital Network. Here's the total cost of the equipment. So for eight hundred MacBook Air, it's eight hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. The annual lease payment, it's a four-year term, the annual lease payment would be one ninety-four, four oh four. So our total is seven seven seven, six one six. At the end of this lease, we have some options. We can do a equipment buyout at a hundred seventy-five dollars per unit and they're ours. If we did that for all eight hundred devices, this would be the total, which is roughly sixty, sixty-two thousand more than the cost if we bought them outright with one check. But spread over four years, that's fifteen-ish. Or we can send them back. We can send them back. The Providence Capital would resell them. They would get their one seventy-five per unit. Anything above and beyond that one seventy-five would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split with us. We would get the seventy-five percent of the proceeds. They get twenty-five percent. Anything above the one seventy-five.
So would, would we have to buy all eight hundred or we could, we could buy?
We could buy one.
Could you leave the buyout to the person if you, if they wanted to actually, you wanted to wipe it and they could keep the device?
Great question and I would say that's a conversation I'd like to have. At least exploit those options. You know, if the district does a refresh, but give the ability to the individual to buy out. You know, there's some rules that we need to abide with tax, but it's something I would like to discuss so that we have a plan moving forward.
So I understand the need for homogenous environment and, and all that. During the four year, what are our terms with regards to maintenance, support, lost, stolen, damaged?
Yep. Great question. We get Apple Care Plus one year because I come standard when you buy it. We would model something very similar to what we do with the, the student iPads. Our staff iPad breakage currently is very, very low. I mean, it is extremely low. Those details, you know, we would mirror something like what we do with kids and typically that's one, um, one accidental. If it's covered, covered by Apple Care, but then beyond that, it was, if it's accidental and it's a second time, then that's typically a bill back. So what I would like to do is mirror something, what we've done with the students and it's been successful and it's actually reduced the amount of accidental breakage. Because they know that, hey, my parents just got a bill, we pay for this, you know. We have my team reviews it, we send it out for repair. They chime in and say, this is, this was willful or this is what we deem to be truly accidental. And then we make determinations from that. So I, I would mirror, I would like to mirror something similar to what we do with the iPads right now. Any questions about the lease or how it works or the numbers or?
Julie, you worked with Marcus on all of the lease quotes, correct?
Just a quick question. So we're using the funds that we would have used to upgrade the?
The desktops.
Desktops.
Yes.
And we're going to use them for foreseeable future. So what's the foreseeable future? I'm just thinking like eight-year-old, that's kind of old.
That'll be nine.
Nine, we're thinking nine years?
Here's the thing we have. So these, the laptops that we have are four years old right now. And this is going to be a four-year lease plus the next year of buyout. The desktops were a three-year lease with one year buyout.
I'm sorry. This is the fourth year on the desktops.
And we did buy the desktops?
We owned them, yes. It was a fair market value lease and it came out to be just under a thousand dollars per unit.
I don't see us using those desktops too much anymore after this.
It's, it's a good point and that's something that we would need to monitor. If, if they're sitting, let me be blunt for a moment. If they're sitting around collecting dust, that, we can find another return on our investment. You know, so what, that's something we'll have to monitor and just say, hey, we left these in place because they're tied to our infrastructure. They're tied to, there's a lot of the reasons why to leave them in place for a, a year or two, but we need to monitor how, what the usage is and we can't do that. That's easy to do.
Yeah, I just think it's a long time, if we plan on replacing it and there's actual usage for the desktops, nine years is a long time to wait.
We're still getting dollars for the eighty-three hundreds and that's an old unit. I mean, that's an eight-year-old desktop and we still, HPE buys those back from us. To a point where it's like, they're going to give us that X amount of, I mean, it goes into a revenue account code, it goes back in the general fund. That's how that, that's how that paper drill works, but we still get money for eighty-three hundreds. And we still have eighty-three hundreds in the district and they're running our CAD software. So.
That's actually what I was going to go to next.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the issues, because I, there's, there's lots of school districts that went one way or the other, but they did try to stay homogenous with, with the OS and, and the, and the manufacturer base. But what's happened is that that eight gig and that limited SSID chip in there, SSD chip, the solid state is not upgradable and also the batteries tend to get worn down.
Yes.
They don't recharge as fast.
Right.
There's not, I mean, you have to get a brand new one and right now the, the Mac, the MacBook Air and the Mini come with a basic gig, right? So you have to, you have to pretty much trade it in for a new one. Do we have the option, because you know, as Stacey was mentioning, nine years. We're moving ahead pretty quickly and, and we expect the MacBook Airs to come out with higher, especially MacBook Pros not having new ports anymore.
Right.
The MacBook Airs are becoming the go-to and there's a huge demand right now for increased memory, speed, space. And Apple's coming out with a brand new chip and battery in a few years.
They are.
What do we do then if we keep these for four years? Can we upgrade them? I mean, what, what, they're not going to last for nine years with the current tech environment.
I don't, I don't think the laptops are going to last.
No, that's not what we're looking, that's not, I don't think what we're looking.
I'm just saying, well, we're going to, by the time we replace these, it'd be nine years since this because we're using the funds for this to, to, that way we're going to use for the desktop. And that's a long period of time is basically what I was saying.
Yep. At the end of that, then it is a decision of, do you want laptops for everyone or do you want desktops? Because it won't be a liquid gold.
What's our option under our current lease plan to actually get those replaced and refurbished before the four years of? Let's say there's a huge, that's what I'm getting at.
You're talking to desktops or you're talking to?
No, I'm talking about these Mac players.
Yep.
We can look into that.
We can look into it.
Because desktop we can take apart. That's, that's a good thing, at least we can.
So we, uh, great question and these are, we can in-house crack these open and start working on them. We just can't. So we've, we've reached out to our vendor that we use for the iPad repairs and say, hey, I know these MacBook Air thirteens are brand new, but what are you charging for a cracked screen? What are you charging for motherboard replacement? We're getting pricing back from them of what it would cost to repair these things if they're, if they're a break fixed situation. My understanding of the lease, there isn't, nothing written into the lease that says, hey, after three years, you don't like these and you want to do an upgrade, then go ahead and do an upgrade. It wouldn't have to be the four-year turn them in or four-year buy them out. It's my understanding.
Well, we can always look into if they're willing to do something like that. You know, that's a decision or that's a discussion I think that needs to happen because that'll definitely extend that lease. They won't just do that for the same price, so they'll extend it. And then, you know, we've been having this discussion, you know, by that time, what happens with our iPads? What happens with our Chromebooks? We still have a lot of needs and I think that's the piece that we, we just don't have a sustainable solution for, for our technology. I mean, we've said it for years and years. We've been able to make it work and, and actually I'm impressed by what we've been able to do with the limited budget that we have. Marcus has done a fantastic job of being able to upgrade and offer and do all of these things. But we are, as we keep adding, there's just, is a limit to what we can continue to do in four years down the road.
I am impressed with your lifecycle management. I think that's, I think that that brings down the cost quite a bit when you plan ahead. I, I just personally, I, I mean, I love the idea of, of doing this. I don't have a problem with it. My concern is, is that we're going to outgrow them faster and faster and what is our plan when that happens?
Sure. Looking for exit strategy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we can look into it at this time. I mean, that's the thing, do we want to just keep, you know, upgrading them after three years and then what? We'll just, that would just be a maintaining of that. We'd be taking the lease costs that we've had and simply using it for that. And then we'd have to find another source to replace like the laptops, the iPads.
It's a lifecycle strategy and it's just questions that we just need to make sure that we're aware of so we understand the cost, pro and con.
And we, we've looked at, you know, we have the question, what, what are we doing with the staff iPads? If this is approved and what are we going to, uh, we've bounced around a lot of cascade plans, whether that's to expand the, the one-to-one initiative and that, if these devices go out to the elementary since we're pulling iPad fours out. It wouldn't be a one-to-one swap, but it would help soften that blow saying, hey, there's still, there's a better device that we can run twelve two on that's available as opposed to saying, well, we're taking all the legacy iPad fours and you get nothing.
And, and, you know, and I'm, I'm with Melissa on the keyboards and needing something more robust than the iPads going forward. I think that the kids are going to need that, but if we build that into the plan about how to maybe repurpose that MacBook Airs and buy new ones or grow them or do whatever and make sure that you keep what you have in there so they have a variety of operating systems and you have the connection capabilities and everything, I think that's great. It's just about expanding it and getting these other questions answered so we have that plan.
Okay, thank you. Again, just to sum up our essential conditions, we talk a lot about our essential conditions. See, last year's project with the Wi-Fi, none of this happens unless we have a robust Wi-Fi to connect to. It just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen. But hardware, desktops, laptops, mobile devices. And then some of the things I, I would reference too is that the, our JAMP Pro, which is our MDM, our mobile device management, allows us to do pre-stage enroll and deploy these. It's really, they've got it down. We have some of these out, we're doing pilots with certain groups and the deployment's amazing. I've watched my team do that, basically hand the, the teacher the box and say, here you go. Couple, couple clicks and they're off you go, you're enrolled. It's, it's really slick, I was, I'm very impressed. That's a lot of work behind the scenes to make that happen because deployments can be tricky. And then again, the Apple Classroom, having the ability to use this tool to, to manage this tool, that's pretty, that's extremely powerful. Don't forget your dongle. You've asked some amazing questions, are there any others that I can answer this evening?
Are you intending to bring this back to the board meeting on the page?
You mentioned wireless, is there any other type of wiring infrastructure? What are we at in the walls and stuff like that? Is that?
Cat six.
Cat six?
Yes.
Oh, cool, okay.
I knew you had upgraded last time, but I didn't know how much.
Cat six. There's some five E around there, but that's, but mostly six, cat six everywhere.
I think, so I, I mean, I, do you want to get a sense if everyone's comfortable with this going forward as far as for, to bring it to the table?
Sure, we can do that, I just wanted to make sure you knew what the process was as to when we're going to, because we can't vote on it today.
No, no, I know, I just, if anyone needs more information, I think it's important that we give them the time to get it, so.
So I think if anyone has more questions or goes home and takes other things to contact Marcus. So we're comfortable with making a decision on these.
And one of my takeaways is that contact the leasing company and see what, if there's some options to have a mid-year, mid-lease option where upgrade or swap out. Am I tracking correctly on that?
Yeah, and you know what? If we were going to phase out some of the iPads and give the kids a MacBook Pro with backend options and we have a sliding scale for cost, if we actually add that to the plan, that would be one too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Well, this is more like, how do we make all this work? So we talked a little bit about, last time that we talked about budgets, kind of like our parameters. So I tried to put a little bit of numbers to our parameters just so you get an idea of what this looks like. So if the government, you know, the legislature approves two percent on the Gen Ed formula, that's a hundred and sixty, twenty-six dollars per pupil per unit. So it goes from sixty-three twelve to sixty-four thirty-eight. And increase on in our enrollment by two hundred and sixty-two students. That total increase is right around three million dollars. So that's what kind of that looks like for additional revenue for that. Increase in special education revenue, because we are a growing district, we do get some additional revenue for special education as well as a four percent increase there, so that's about five hundred thousand dollars. And I'm giving some rough, rough estimates as we're still working through some of these processes. I'll be bringing more, um, specific revenue, not far off, I know that. Aspen transportation, we should, um, if we're going to be transporting Aspen students, we get a point four three seven of their Gen Ed formula for transporting and it ends up if they have about three hundred students that are resident students attending Aspen right now. So I just took those three hundred students as if we were transporting all of them. This is a little tricky as we have to code them or they have to make sure that they're coding them as getting transportation from us. And so that'll be a little work on our part to make sure that we actually get that total revenue. And then as we have seen over the past few years, we have had a decrease in our compensatory, our basic skills revenue because our free reduced price lunch is, um, percentage has gone down. And so we lose about forty-five thousand dollars there. So our total new revenue is about a little over three point five million dollars.
Hey Julie, before you bought that screen, the two hundred and fifty-two students, is that a combination of our maximum OE and our estimated growth?
That's two, no, new students for next year.
And so if we, we've beat that estimate a few years, I know this year's looking, you know, for enrollment, we're trying to get everyone to register and all this kind of stuff. That is, that, right now, that's a conservative estimate or is that right on?
That's what I'm anticipating to be end of year, next year, end of year. So that's the revenue we would get for the whole year. I'm hoping, I mean, we have four hundred and fourteen kindergarten students registered right now. That doesn't include any open enrolled students, those are resident only. And we kind of went through and figured we had about two hundred and eighty other ones that we haven't heard from yet. So we've heard from some that said, I'm holding my child or I'm attending another school. We've heard from some, that doesn't include those students.
Two hundred and eighty other resident students that are in kindergarten only?
Right, that are potential kindergarten.
That are not registered yet.
That are not registered yet.
That would put us over our in-district from last couple of years.
It would.
If we captured them all.
So, I don't know where they're going to school. Or maybe they're holding them back or there's a lot of different options, obviously, so. So we are trying to contact them and finding out what, what their plans are. Additional revenue sources, we are anticipating a little bit of an increase in our interest revenue. I'd say about $36,000 is kind of what I'm looking at right now. And we're also talking about increasing activity fees. One of the reasons that we're looking at activity fees is because we have some increases in staff wages, coaching wages, and we also have increases that we know are coming in referees and umpires. They're, they are also seeking an increase in those. So we need a way to cover those costs and, and so we're looking at some additional activity fees. We're also looking at some other options with, um, you know, go, going to games and looking at, you know, one of our rates, making sure that we're charging correctly for that as well. So we're looking, working on that. We'll be bringing that information to you as well. Some expenditure assumptions that we kind of know that we already have, wages and benefits, that four-year average cost. And just so that you know, I kind of take that four-year average and apply it to the actual staff that we have now, so that you're not looking at like student staff that were here four years ago and different wages. So I'm taking that percentage and applying it. On the buses for transportation, about $125,000. 8.7 FTE for student growth, 543. Additional custodial staffing to operate the new building spaces, $300,000. We have some additional needs for secretarial staff as we continue to grow at La Ola de Lago and other areas, about $100,000. 1.7 FTE special education, she has, that's a need to, she is going to be switching some people around and adding some, a little bit of staff. But she thinks right now with what she knows, that that 1.7 FTE is enough to add up to what she needs for staffing currently.
That would be Deb Anderson.
Deb Anderson, yes. Sorry.
She, her.
She, Deb, her, yes. Our special ed director, I'm hearing about that. Looking at her. So our proposed expenditure is 3.9. As, as you know right away, it's more than what we're receiving in revenue. However, we haven't spent all the dollars. You know, we're carrying over some funds, we're carrying those, knowing that we're opening these new buildings. And so you have to remember that we haven't spent all of our funds this year as well. So we're kind of rounding those things out as we're moving towards opening these buildings. We definitely would be covered without the additional custodial staffing, but it's kind of where we're at right now. We have a lot of additional expenditure assumptions that we are looking into as well. We do know we have some utility costs to cover, the additional square footage, and the same with the custodial supply budgets. We need to increase those to cover those additional spaces. We do have a transportation increase of about 2%. Additional costs for activities, which hopefully will be offset by additional revenue that we get there. I put, you know, we had allocated, we know that we have about $800,000 in construction allocation from the referendum. And I only put about 600 in this year, kind of remaining $200,000 in FY '21. Some additional things that, as I go through this, you know, technology, that, that lease that Marcus talked about is about $20,000 more than our lease has been in past years. So it's, it would go up about $20,000 there. And so we're still having costs come as we're going through this process. Needs that are coming in as we're going through things. And the other thing that we'll be doing this spring is an RFP for garbage services. So I anticipate as we add one more building, those costs will increase as well. And there are additional other staffing requests under consideration by the administration. We have in all buildings, there's different, so here's just a list of what those are. We definitely know, just like any budget, we can't afford it all. And so it's really prioritizing and trying to find the best way to make these things happen and make sure our students are getting the services that they need.
Julie, could you do me a favor, just explain what assessment is?
I'm going to be a data assessment, looking at our data.
So right now, we're, we have a data assessment coordinator. It's a teacher on special assignment. What we're seeing is perhaps a greater need, instead of somebody that's on a teacher contract, looking at perhaps administrative. So it wouldn't be the full cause, but it would be an increase of that role from our current part to a 260-day employee.
Okay, so it's basically the adding of ways?
Yes, the adding of additional time.
Thank you, thank you, because assessment's a broad term.
Yes.
It is, it's a data assessment.
Okay, thank you.
We have some intervention requests, technology staffing, as you know, lunch and as we grow, lunch recess, campus supervisors. You heard earlier about the social workers and the needs, guidance counselors, deans, students. We have all those requests we're looking at and try to do the best that we can in making sure that we're covering all those needs.
Julie, just one more on the job learning intervention.
So reading intervention as?
I'm assuming that's not what it is.
It's more of a reading intervention, really. Or if there's a need in any other area as well.
Okay.
It's an intervention for you.
Yeah, I might need one too.
We talked about this, I just don't want, I, I'm not really going to go over it again, but I just don't want to lose it. So as we continue to go through this, and we want to really look at, seeing if there's a way to increase our achievement integration levy, we do have that option. And just slowly increasingly in over the next several years, so that we can take advantage of that levy authority. And then also keeping open the discussion about the 2020, 2021 school year and beyond just has an effect on my five-year budget planning. So if we, I mean, if there's any, right now, it's, I show it as 75 students in kindergarten and 1%. If there's space in our buildings and there's, is a change on the board's part, it would be a good discussion to have as we look at a five-year plan. And that's really all I have for that for tonight. We will continue to work through our budget process and bringing you more information as we continue to look through that. And here are information from the legislature as well.
Does it continue to be a report?
Yes.
Melissa?
Question, comment? Can you go back to the slide just before we talked about options? Can you walk us through the math? No, no, the next one, it was just after that. Yep, there you go.
Oh, this one?
If you can walk us through the math, um, back in, back just two years ago in 2016, we, as a board, voted to close open enrollment. And if you could look at what that would mean for numbers to the previous slide with additional needs, the additional dean of students, guidance counselor, social workers, technology, campus supervisors, all the extra utility costs, different extra custodial supplies, the busing, the 8.7 FTE student growth. If we did what we did in 2016 and we closed open enrollment, so we just have our current Laker open enrollment students, what that would mean for not only the budget, but also we wouldn't have to be moving folks around with budget with boundary changes. Walk through how those two are correlated with open enrollment?
I don't, I can't really speak to the boundary changes because the boundary changes are simply for our resident students.
So I, I think too, part of your question is, the amount of open enroll students out is approximately what?
700.
The amount coming in?
It's a little over 1,000.
So we're getting a net, I guess, delta plus 300 students?
Right.
And so with that comes revenue, plus also from a space standpoint. So it's not like we're, because of the, the work of the board of managing open enrollment, with the students coming in, we're negating the students that are leaving the district, correct? So we're not operating in a negative, but also?
It's even blown our bubble. And so now we can see how it affects our budget right here.
I'm not sure, tell me more about blowing our bubble.
Our, our, our breadth of our whole district. We've had to have, have new buildings, we've got all, now we've got all these extra costs that are adding on to it too, when we have grown our footprint.
But I don't believe that as, I mean, I know open enrollment is part of that equation, but our growth has not been contributed to open enrollment. Our growth has been that we're a growing district.
Right, we have a, right, we have a growing district.
And then we continue to have students and families moving into our district.
We've got that already. We've got that innate growth already. So, but here we're seeing how all the, besides the innate growth, actually having all the people that are also looking at adding another, you know, 200 kids again next year, how that impacts our budget. It's front and foremost right here.
You know, and this is maybe the easiest way for me to explain this. 2% on our formula. So if we talk about the legislature's willing to give us 2% on our formula for growth, it's about a million dollars for our district. So simply just a million dollars. If we go back here to our expenditures just for state wages and benefits, doesn't cover it. Just wages and benefits doesn't cover it. We need the growth to help us manage all of our expenditures. So that bringing in 250 additional students is, is what is helping us to manage our budget. And so that's what I, you know, that's what may be the easiest way of saying that. Because if we just were stagnant and not a growing district, we couldn't really cover our, we could not cover our ongoing expenditures just with 2%.
We are growing.
Right.
So that open enrollment lever is being used to help with that when really it's designed for districts that are not growing, like you mentioned.
No, that's not the goal of open enrollment.
We have a, no.
Yeah, it, it's to fill seats when we've got open seats. We don't have open seats. We're back to the gills.
And that's why it's talking about that for the 2020, 2021 school year. I mean, I just, it has to be a discussion item so that everybody understands what the direction of the board is going. And so that, that's a discussion that you as a board need to have and say, yes, this is going to be something we're going to do, continue to do, or we're not, so that we can look at the future and make sure that we're handling that correctly. Is that simple? Who isn't out of time now? Slide.
So that discussion basically would be whether we want to go above the requirement put on us by the state as to what our open enrollment, what we have to allow. Correct?
Correct.
And we do have to allow a certain number of students?
No, no. In 2016, we, for 60 days, voted to completely have nothing. We didn't have to be 1% for grade.
You have to allow 1%.
Yeah, well, not if you're over capacity, but we don't have a capacity limit that we pre-established by grade, right?
But also we'll have more space too.
Yeah.
With our enrollment. And so therein lies, from a budgeting standpoint, the assumptions you are, are looking at, Julie, 75 kindergarten and 1% at each grade level. So from the assumption standpoint, we can, as a board, I think we want to keep the door open to the conversation. Is that what you're comfortable with, knowing what that looks like for revenues versus expenditures? Is there, is there something you want to be more restrictive of?
I like to see it as more restrictive.
For 2021, will we have a new elementary school?
Yes, yes, that'll be open.
And so if we actually make a plan to actually have a capacity limit by grade, so we can say in August, so students have, so parents and students have choices? Because I think it's been really hard on our community to wait as long as we make them wait. And the, the standard is, is that you have that capacity, so you know how many kids you have. It helps, you do it, it helps parents come in. And then you, you set your limit that, okay, in January, we're closing it and we're going to take the ones that we have the seats for and, and the delay and stuff like that. But, you know, we, we haven't had a capacity that we've actually stated by grade going forward. And so the, so half and half, I believe, the 1% stands as the minimum if you don't have that capacity thing. But we never put it down.
But we haven't filled that 1% in many of our grades.
No.
Well, it's the, it's, it's basically going back and planning with that capacity. And hopefully we'll be a lot more equipped for that. And it really would be better for parents not to wait for that vote in January sometimes, you know, to know. So.
I agree with you, know as soon as we can, but I mean, if you're talking about an exact number for capacity in each, in each grade?
That's what most schools have.
I think that that's a little bit scary to do because people are moving in and out of here all the time. So we say our capacity is this and we can take one or two open enrolled and we're, we think we're full with our residents and residents move in. What do you do if you can't stay hard and fast with that number?
Well, the reason why they have the capacity set is A, because they know just how much space they have. But also the reason why they, they then say, okay, until January 15th, we close it. That way you can see what happened and how can we move stuff around and who can we really take? So it's, 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 it's kind of a.
I think it's a side conversation we're going to.
But, but I would like to see us make the decision earlier because I, I think that maybe we lose kids also because we decide so late. And that, and that's something that I think may help us in the future. I think we're going to have a lot more space to do that also, once we get the new space. We're going to have a lot more.
And I've got a host of buildings, I understand that part, but it doesn't hold that spot.
What happens is we're looking at budget, we're committing to budget, you know, we see in here, but then, then later on, as this open enrollment conversation, I would like to see that, how the two are correlated at budget time. That makes more sense.
And it's really hard to do any formula to get a break even point. But I mean, part of that planning that we do in advance is to know, how many kids do we need in order to make our budget? You know, and then, and then try to get that break even point, which is, you're going to be all over the board, but you allow yourself the time to see what grows and what doesn't grow, so you can, so you can start to measure it out.
I think therein is the reason why we have an outlook there. Is to continue to have the conversation around capacity, open enrollment. You know, I think it's, we're in a very fortunate district to have 250, approximately 250 students coming in every year, anticipated residents. Because a lot of districts are either declining or flat, and the challenges are much different. And so when we have that growth coming in, it is important and it is, some see it as a real big challenge. And it is, because when you're growing like that, space, curriculum, programs, all of those things. But the other side of the coin is you might be closing buildings or cutting programs.
There's problems either way to look at it, but, and it can change. I mean, we have to be flexible in that planning. I understand it needs to be some guidelines, some parameters. And, and I believe that, you know, through the course of our conversations, we're talking about it now a little bit. I mean, we keep talking about it all the time. It's not like, okay, it's, you know, January 1st, let's talk. Doesn't happen.
We've made that decision, I think, in December most, in the last few years. It's when we've kind of set that parameter for open enrollment. And so.
I think, I, I just made a question. As far as, I mean, I know this is kind of just the start of the conversation as far as that. But as far as open enrollment, for me, I think looking forward, because I think we're going to have some different information that we haven't had in the past, as far as some of the stuff that Dennis has done with the plan and that kind of thing. If we can look at a longer term, like, hey, what's planned, what, you know, how many units, that kind of thing, to get us to say, you know, is a second, is another elementary down the path? And if it is, when is it? Because that will, in my, in my opinion, for my, me, affect how I deal with open enrollment. Because if in three years I have to turn around and say, hey, guess what? We need another building, that, that might make a difference for me as to what we're going to do. If it's eight years down, 10 years down, you know, that's a different story. So for me to get some of that, I think, I think we're able to get a little bit different information that we have had in the past. So I think that would be important for us to see.
The thing that Dennis doesn't have is the turnover. You know, that's what's so hard. We know how many new buildings, what that brings in, and it's the turnover that's the toughest piece. Saying, well, this house turned over and now we have two kids in here. Well, they had high school kids leaving and, you know, that's the piece.
What do other districts do? Because everybody has that problem.
There's real estate stats and they use the demographic reports and everything like that. I mean, they've been pretty on track.
Just general real estate stats and?
Well, not general, but there's, there's a combination of stats that it's a, this has been going on for a long time. There's some districts that kind of have it down to a science. And in, in changing economic times, it always becomes a little fluctuous, if that's a word. But you've got that.
I think we need to move on.
So, so we'll continue to bring you information as we work through these.
Thank you, Julie. Move on to Elementary Attendance Boundary Committee update.
Yes. So I know Christie's here too. She could certainly help give a presentation in the back. I'll give it a, I'll start. Let me know if I've missed anything.
Sounds good.
So Monday night, the, we had our, had our meeting on March 18th, our input meeting. We did have a turnout of approximately, I think, 80, 85 or 90 parents or some community members that were there to hear the information and kind of had a breakout session within the, the process of giving some input. I think very well-attended process where administrators were there engaging with the state. I think very well attended process where administrators were there engaging with the stakeholders around question, concerns, just new ideas, new concepts. And from that point, brought that input back to the input team to really look at what was received. I think in looking back at that meeting, and I know just about all of you were there, you know, I think there were some questions about what was on the website and what actually was there for parents to give input on. And our intent was not to create confusion, although that, that did come out. There was some confusion about what was on the website and what was being looked at that evening of the 18th. Because different groups were thinking, well, you know, within the models that were out there from the maps, they were either at one school or they're not at another school. And so we've had some community feedback on just trying to understand where the change, why the change, and then also how is the input that's coming forward being incorporated, moving forward, you know, in the process of the design team as well as the input team ultimately coming to the board. So since the 18th, the input team, we did meet and just really spent a lot of time talking about the feedback that was received. And we're looking at some different scenarios coming forward. The design team is meeting again this Friday to look at some conceptual pieces from that evening. And then we have another input meeting on Wednesday, the 10th. After that, looking at that input and the, the maps would, if the input team feels solid with where it's at and moving forward, it would come to the board work session on April 22nd. Go over the options, go over the information, go over the recommendation or recommendations, and then ultimately coming back, seeking board approval on May 6th. So.
Jeff, we're getting a lot of feedback at the board. Is the, is the committee that's, that's working on the boundary changes and some of that, are they getting that? Are they even passed through the emails that we're getting?
They are.
Okay, good.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I know you've had correspondence with community members, Dr. Stallow has. Again, just, you know, I think another thing that, that has been, just kind of hindsight being 2020 looking at it, I think, once the first maps went out there, A1, B1, people thought, well, that's the recommendation. You know, well, that's what it is. That, you know, and I, I think the process is intended to, to start with a, at a place, get feedback, get perspective, come back. And so the maps have continued to change. And while that is sort of part of the process, it hasn't been totally clear with some of our stakeholders. And in some ways has been more confusing, saying, yeah, it seems like it's shifting. Now all of a sudden it's moving, it's all of a sudden it's, you know. And so again, it's just, that's been some of the questions that have come forward to say, you know, this is our intent. We are hearing your feedback. It's going to the input team. The input team spent a particular amount of time talking about the, the information that was received, looking at the emails and that perspective that was shared. I want to commend our, our principals. They, we have staff members from every building. We have parents, stakeholders from every building that are on the committee, providing perspective and providing really the feedback. And I know many of our community stakeholders know who those folks are and are giving that perspective as well, and they're bringing that forward. And so it's really been, it's been a robust process. Obviously, you know, what comes out of this is people really value the schools that their kids are attending. You know, they, they really appreciate the staff, they, they appreciate their, their students' experience, and, you know, change can be difficult.
More than anything, they appreciate neighborhood schools, which is our vision, and all want to have neighborhood schools.
Well, I speak to residents.
So, yeah, oh, I'm.
I was just going to say, I mean, just from the feedback I think that we got that night from people, they were, I mean, I think they were really thankful that there was a process for them to give input, and they were very respectful and asked great questions. And I think it was good that, you know, we could be there just to kind of observe and see what's going on, and just ask people how, you know, where they're at. So I thought it was a really positive experience. I mean, I know we're getting feedback, but you're going to get feedback no matter what, no matter what the change is, because there's always going to be somebody moving. But I do think that the process itself, so up until this point, I mean, there's been a couple of glitches, but it's been more positive than in years past with just the numerous boundary changes that we've had quite a few years ago.
The one thing too that I know was mentioned Monday night, I don't think, I don't know if that was real, if people are still settling in to the experience and didn't quite catch it. But the numbers that you see in the presentation from the 18th do not match the budgetary numbers that you see in enrollment from, from the numbers you see from, from Julie. That's by design. The numbers that we have in our boundary process are focused on resident students. So our goal is to ensure that all of our, all of our schools have room for resident students, projected, current and projected. And then after that is a lens to say, how do we do in-district transfers? Is that something that's available to families too, where they ask their student, that they want their student to attend another school? And then the third lens of that, or the third layer will be, where do we place our open enrolled students? Because when you open enroll, you're open enrolling into the district. You're not open enrolling into Greenwood. You know, open enrollment, when they're accepted in the district, they can be placed at any of our schools. And so that's why our process with determining and looking at boundaries through this lens is, it's been focused on our resident numbers and our resident students, the market share. We have a very high market share of students that come, that attend Prior Lake Savage area schools. And so that's healthy, and that's something that we see. And so that's how we are building our planning assumptions moving forward.
Question for you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Why is it that we're not including current open enrolled students in our planning? Why are we only looking at residents moving?
So our residents, where they're at with the previous point, you talked about the neighborhood schools. We want to ensure with our developments that we have space in our neighborhood schools for those neighborhoods, for where those capacities, capacities are at. Our open enrolled students, once we understand where we have room for our residents, what makes sense within boundaries, then we would assign our open enrolled students to round out the spaces so that we don't have a school that's over capacity and another school that's under capacity. One of the things the committee has been talking about, and I really appreciate your comments, Stacy, about looking at the enrollment intelligence services that we, that we have through Dennis, is we're able to forecast and look at where the developments that are happening within the community. And they're happening along the northern part of the district boundary, northern part of the border. Pretty soon that may shift as more farmland is sold and more developers are coming in. And so as we, as our goal is to try to establish a boundary for five years, maybe more, in this next time around, we use open enrollment to manage. If we know growth is coming somewhere a little later, we might have, we might use open enrolled students there in the short term. Whereas once houses are built and those open enrolled students kind of ascend through our grade levels, then we would have room for our resident students that are not there yet through building.
But by not.
Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But by not including those people, by including those people now that don't even live in the district, we're, in some cases, we're asking resident taxpayer students to move schools in advance of people that aren't even in our district. Yet we still have all these open enrollment that are coming in droves from Shakopee. And it, yes, yes.
It's limited.
And they're not, the numbers aren't included, are they? I'm sorry.
They're, no, they're not included.
We're, our planning for our boundaries are using our residents.
So we are limiting our resident students.
Boundary, not for the total capacity.
Right, but you've got, you've got all the currently open enrolled Lakers coming in, okay? And they're not included on this mix, in this project. But yet we're asking residents to change schools ahead of those who aren't even living in the district or who are open enrolled currently. So that's the part that I think so many residents are having a very difficult time with.
So I think the one thing that, that our group committee has been talking about is currently, and I think, you know, one of, several of our community members brought this up, is when a new school is developed, when a new school is approved, you're automatically going to be redoing boundaries. Because you have to, you know, again, you're going to be shifting students in order to accommodate the growth that we have. Second of all, Greenwood is not going to be, that whole attendance boundary, people are going to be shifting. When you have a special program such as Sage or Lowell de Lago, you have parents that are foregoing going to their neighborhood schools in order to attend a program. And so we anticipate that we'll have approximately, just on a very minimal amount, probably 30% of our elementary students and families moving as a result through this process. And so again, with open enrollment, it's not to say we're not planning for them because they're currently within our schools. We understand where our capacity is, but it's being, we want to ensure that our planning assumptions and our planning for our schools are around who's currently in our building from our residents, as well as where those new developments that are coming in. You may be an open enrolled student coming into the district. You may also be a new family coming into the district that's going to be buying one of the lots in, in some of those developments at, say, Trillium Cove. And we want to ensure that where those developments are being planned by the city, that we have space in those areas for, for resident students. And we, we have space for open enrollment, the ones that we allow in. But it's used to balance out the capacity of our, of our elementary schools.
We're not at full capacity on the, on the beats that I saw. Most of them were at 80% to 85% here in five years.
Because again, it's resident students. That is what our planning is, is on. That's what, that's what you see in, in the capacities and the information that's on the website.
Jeff, can you clarify procedurally where I think we're hung up here? Is current open enrolled students? If I, if I'm hearing you correctly, the first step is we're doing this with in-district students, we're, our resident students changing the boundaries. The second level or the second step of the process will be after those are established, that we will be determining if in-district transfers will be allowed and where to. And after that is all done, our current open enrolled students will then be getting assigned to buildings? Or are our current, are our current open enrolled students going to be allowed to stay in the building we are in right now?
So the former, not the latter.
Okay, so I mean, I think, I think to answer.
And that doesn't make any sense at all, because these, in, these out-of-district Lakers, when they came in, they got to pick three schools that they could, that they wanted to go to. They got to choose. Okay, this is the, this is the person who's sitting at the table.
They get a choice.
This is the, this is the person who's sitting at my table, one of the many, and I've had a lot of people contacting. And they said that they got to pick three schools, and then they got to pick which one they wanted to go to. But they're, again, we want, they're here in a district, once a Laker, always a Laker, we believe in that wholeheartedly. But they should be wherever we've got empty chairs.
I think that's what Jeff just said.
From the get-go, from the get-go, first, before we're making residents move.
That is exactly what.
That's exactly what we're doing.
So the reason we do that.
Now, now we're making residents move.
Just so that you understand, we do ask them, what schools are you interested in going to? So that we have an idea of where they live. Maybe they live in Jordan, and they really want to go to Five Hocks because that's their closest school. But maybe we don't have space there for them. So even though they only wrote one choice, I'm only going to Five Hocks, or maybe it's I'm only going to Lowell de Lago, I don't want to go to any of your other schools. We have that happen as well. Then we offer them another choice, because we don't have space there. And we say, here is where we have space for you, and then they make a choice, whether they want to attend our schools or not. And that's how that works.
Okay, I understand that, but they're out of, they're, they're in our district. So that's part of, part of the program is that we have the ability to reassign them.
Yes.
Because they, that should be considered first before asking resident taxpayers to move.
They're not even considered at all.
They're not considered.
They're not even a part of this at all, so as soon as we know who's attending that school, then.
That should be first, before you have resident taxpayers that are being asked to move.
It's like they're not going to school anywhere right now.
Yeah, they're considered as a number, so as we have, you know, 40 kids.
We don't know that they may or may not move.
I think, I think the challenge, I think the challenge, Melissa, would be if you took your approach, which would be, we're going to put every open enrolled student in this building and make them all move to this building.
No, not that building. It's where we have spots.
But, but I think that's what we're attempting to do. We, we, I don't know how you can avoid with a new building. Let's just say we had not a single open enrolled student in the district. You have a new building, you're going to have boundary changes.
Right, but that new building isn't going to be open up for a bit of time here.
Boundary changes are consistent with the year the building opens.
Right, okay.
We do have Greenwood completely getting moved, and that's the first concern. And then the, the next concern is how to equally populate the new elementary and.
Excuse me? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
So I have my year off. Granted, I have my year off, but of when we were going to happen. But, but still, we're making exceptions and not considering in-district folks first, who are taxpayers.
But we are.
We are.
We are.
Looking at the numbers, we're moving people around, and we still will have openings and we'll have empty chairs waiting for new residents to come in that are going to be in those future developments.
So, so I think, Melissa.
I looked at the charts.
I, I think how, if I had the same conversation with the parents that you're, you're talking to, I think what the best way to alleviate some of that concern would be, step one is we're drawing new boundaries, and people are going to have to move. That's true. That's true. And it may affect you, and you're going to have to decide how to, how to handle that. Step two in the district's process right now is to analyze how will we handle in-district transfers? And if I live in Nob Hill, and I've been told that my son now has to go to Westwood, when the process is complete, if there is space still at Jeffers, I could request an in-district transfer. And it's my understanding that I would receive a priority, because I am in district, to an open enrolled student who previously attended Jeffers who might get displaced because I want my son to be at Jeffers.
That won't work. There's just going to be so many.
But that is the process, as I understand it. So we have, we are attempting, the committee, not us, we're not doing that. But the, the folks addressing this are attempting to give priority. I wouldn't say attempting. They are giving priority to in-district students to find a way to attend the building that they want to attend prior to any of our open enrolled students getting an opportunity to get dibs on the chair.
The other thing that just kind of occurred to me, that I'm not sure if you're thinking this way, but there is a pass, there is room, is Jeffers will have some room, that have room for new students. And other students that are there now will be moving, but there's room. But we have, we're trying to plan so that we don't have to make boundary changes again for the next five to six years. So we're planning on filling those spots with this new development that's, that's coming in. So I'm not sure if that's what you're thinking? Because, you know, we, if, yeah, we could keep Jeffers fine, maybe the way, maybe we can't, I'm not even sure. But then the new development starts, and then where do those kids go? Because then all, then all of a sudden they go to Jeffers, and we're overcrowded at Jeffers, and we have space somewhere else. So then we're looking at another boundary change in a year or two or something like that. So I think we're trying to avoid that situation as well.
You know, here's the thing, there's a lot of confusion because of the percentages that were listed. There's a lot of confusion because of the closeness of all the elementary schools that we really have. They are, I mean, let's face it, we've got a very large district, and they're all kind of bunched up.
In a perfect world, we put them in all the right places.
But we don't have a perfect world. And hopefully, the, the, again, the committee is taking to, is taking into account all the emails and concerns from parents. And, and I get it, it's also, it's how you drive the work. I mean, when you've got to go backwards, you drive your kid, and then you've got to go back the other way, you know? And you're driving by the school that's right by you, which is one of the concerns we heard. And then they're looking at the percentages. There's a lot to consider here. It's a huge chess game. And, and you're right, we want to do this so that we don't have to tell these people they're moving again. Because that would not be good. And I think we're also working around the other boundary change we made to Glendale and to Westwood and stuff like that to say, you guys aren't changing again either, the ones we've already changed.
Yeah, no, I mean, and that's been in the guided change, I mean, to the extent possible. And, and right now, within our scenarios, those are working out as we anticipated when we forecasted that two years ago.
Are we going to have, because of the amount of feedback that we received and because of obviously the map changing every minute, are we going to have another, at least a public forum or something to help explain what the changes are to people?
least a public forum or something to help explain what the changes are to people? I mean, I, when I, again, I was trying to figure out how these are normally made, and I, I do see multiple public forums coming of this.
Well, I think that's the question, because any change with a public forum, so I mean, coming out of, of April ten, there would be the update that these are the recommendations coming forward that we would put out there, and then ideally, we would, or, in essence, we have the board work session where we go through those recommendations for board consideration.
Would that be a dedicated study session just for that, with...
I don't know if it's, I know that's one of the items on there.
Yeah, it would be on, it would be on the agenda for sure.
It will be.
But I don't think it's dedicated just for that.
I just want, you know, if there's, I just remember when we had to go through the county road changes and stuff like that, and they had their multiple options here, and then they had the county engineers and stuff like that come in and try to explain it, and there was, people were able to ask questions in there, but they literally went up there and said, we did this, for this percentage, and then this shifts over here, and that really helped everyone in the room to understand the quandary that the county and the city were in, trying to move things around, because no matter what you touch, you're going to affect, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
It's going to have a, you know, so, maybe that would help, because, you know, I, I got to admit that it was, it was confusing at our table, the feedback was excellent, but the feedback was also, if you look at it, they don't want to change.
No, excuse me, Mary, I'm in, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask the two over here that have been quiet, if they have anything they want to contribute, and then I think we need to move on.
Any questions I have, I can do a follow-up, I was going to ask some specific job response situation, but I think there's side conversations, and I, and I can do it through the whole board, just so I can better understand. I, I was talking to Jonathan earlier, I, I haven't even driven out there again to relook at what people are thinking about, and, and how developments fit together, so I think spatially I have to see it, but I think I understand the other concept, we're starting with our district students, and then in-district transfers, then open enrollment, that all makes perfect sense to me. I agree, we may get more input as we go, or may need to explain it carefully too, and as a board, I, I look forward to more time to discuss it, just so that it's not just presented to us, so I appreciate that, all the effort that's going into it, and I, I do think the process overall, even though I wasn't involved in prior ones, it's going to go. Henry gave a very interesting example. Anyone else?
I'll just say, I think we are all having occasional conversations at the grocery store, and at the coffee shop, and wherever, about this.
Right.
And I do think it's important, when people ask, that we should be saying, just so you know, that, beginning that school year, right now, open enrolled students do not have a home. They don't know where they're going to be. When the lines are drawn, you'll start over, and in-district students still have the priority.
They have a home, they don't have a house.
That's good.
But I, but I think that's just good for people to know, because then, there is a perception out there that somehow open enrolled students have some advantage. I don't believe they do.
And Mary, I'll go back to your comment about the work session. I mean, I'm, I'm guessing that that will take up a good part of our work session, and I would assume that we'd have committee members here as well for the presentation, and the slides, and all that next stuff, so there'll be more emphasis. This was just meant to be kind of an update of the West New Orleans, so there'll be something more involved, for sure, I don't know that we're completely dedicated to that, but...
Well, it's going to be, obviously, there's going to be a lot of questions and stuff like that, and, and I just don't see how there'd be much time for anything else, to be the truth, because it's, it's a complicated move, and, and also for the open enrolled students. I, I, I understand the people's concern, there was a lot of questions about that, but then the biggest question that I've received is, what are you going to do with the, with some of the spent students that are open enrolled, and don't handle that transition well, and what if they fall to the bottom, and, you know, so there's, the, the variables are unending right now for that committee, and we're not going to understand the process of how they came to some of their solutions, and I think that's going to take a long time to explain.
So, the committee does not plan the transitions?
No, I get that, but, but the, the movement, and the, the effect of the movement, and then the other stuff, the variables coming in have got to be tremendous, and they're, it helps us if we understand the process, and I don't think that's something that can happen in twenty minutes, is what I'm getting at.
Well, we're not going twenty minutes here, we're going on three hours, which is not in the plan, it was supposed to be a two-hour work session. And I understand, it's a very emotional, I mean, it's complicated, but it's a very emotional topic, and it always has been, and I'm not trying to belittle that at all, so hopefully we can work something out, make it workable. So if there's no other comments now, I'm going to move on to board governance policies, and I'm not sure who's taking care of those.
I am. So I'm just going to try and go through them quickly, and if you have questions, let me know. The annual audit is seven oh three, and after our discussion last time, we did add item J to that, for the RFPs. I'm moving on to seven hundred and four.
Can I, I'd just like to say something, because I know we talked about the RFP, but we talked about the bigger question of if we're really going to switch, or we're putting emphasis on rotating auditors every five years? And, and an RFP for services, I tried to bring out last time.
What the discussion the board has to have, if they want to say you have to change auditors or auditors.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, because an RFP for an existing service provider automatically gives, if we can respond to it, automatically gives an overwhelming advantage to the original service provider in an audit, just because they have zero ramp up, they can price it lower, et cetera, so is our goal to just do an RFP, or is our goal actually to perform best practice? Even standard practice? And that, that's the only thing, that's the only question I have with this, I brought it up last time, and I just think that that's a...
That wasn't the request that I received from the board?
No, the request was to... Yeah, the request was to have an RFP every five years.
And that was what I put in here, so if there's a different discussion, I think that's what the board has to determine, whether they think it's important, or it changes every five years or not, it's just...
Well, if, if the intention is actually to do that, to, to have the RFP so that the existing auditor cannot do it regardless of how many transition years we go through, then that would be something that would solidify the, the, the industry standard practice.
I don't know if that's legal.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yes, to automatically count out someone?
Yes, it is, it's perfectly legal, you can issue the RFP to whoever you want, you can say that we have to change, and that's, that was a concern I had last time when we mentioned the RFP, I say the RFP is good, but it's not going to necessarily get you to industry standard practice.
Does that need to be in policy, or could that be determined when we put together the RFP?
Is the outcome to change auditing every five years?
Yeah, I, I guess I never thought that that would be an option, that would be for sure changing auditors, when we talked about this.
So would the policy be okay as exists, but when the time comes for the auditors aboard, there's some discussion if that's still a concern?
I think it would be a question of, are we, is, is the purpose of having the RFP go out for the purpose of making sure we're making responsible use of our expenditures, or is it because we want to have a new set of eyes? From Mary's perspective, it's to have an entire new set of eyes, others looked at it as trying to make sure we're, we're putting it out for a cause and purpose every five years.
I think at our last meeting, I think it was to do the RFP, I don't, in, I think the notes I took, and what Dr. Tostalo took, was not that we would automatically necessarily lead to a change in auditing services, so...
And I think that's, I think, I think...
The reason why I brought it up was to...
You brought it up for that purpose.
To best practices, which was basically, and, and what I said was, a lot of districts, a lot of places do musical chairs, and switch every three to five years, and they just use the same two or three, because they send it out the same, but the goal of this change was basically to say, from the very beginning, that they do look at switching out for best practices under standard financial practices of anti-bias. That's, that's the way it's done.
I don't think we took away that message or direction from the board last time.
And I don't know that I did, I mean, it was, it'd be an RFP.
So right now, Julie, what you have in policy seven oh three, has the language in there of conducting a request for proposal for auditing services every five years.
Yes.
So then incumbent auditing firms could participate, and then you're looking at all of those RFP submissions as what you receive, so the end of that could be the incumbent, or it could be somebody totally new.
And the reason why you don't issue RFPs for the same service providers is because the service providers in particular that have been in there have an automatic advantage, so normally they are eliminated from the pool. The ramp up time is zero, so they're, you know, charge for it, that's why successive years.
Does anyone want to reword it, or uncomfortable with it?
You're nodding.
No, I'm comfortable with it, and, yeah, I mean, I've done several RFPs with, with the existing incumbent, and have also worded it not to the incumbent.
Right.
Not because it was written into the, into our policy that way, it's just because there was somebody else that came up, that was better offered, services that better aligned with the direction we were heading.
If, if, if you're not cost-based?
Even cost-based.
I've never seen that happen with...
Well, and I don't believe, I mean, I, I don't, I don't believe that when we do that, our ultimate decision will be purely cost.
Right.
As a board, right?
That's correct.
I mean, I think it'll be, it'll be cost, who fits with what, what we want, what we need, timeline, all those other things, so we won't be limited to a, to a cost decision.
Okay, so you agree with that, Melissa? Okay, Mary, you would like to say something?
I just want to know what the real purpose of it then is, other than just issuing the RFP, but...
Do you not want to do the RFP at all? Do you want this language taken out, or...
No, 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 I, 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 I like RFPs, I just, it's just for the purpose, the, the spirit and the purpose, the original purpose of why I asked for this initially, to even be discussed and added, was to make sure that we were following AICPA and GAAP coming standards.
Okay.
I think the general consensus to leave the wording as it is. So I'll come forward to the board next.
Okay. Moving on to seven oh four, development and maintenance of inventory of fixed assets and fixed asset accounting system. We currently do have fixed asset accounting as part of our audit, and so you get that every year, as part of our audit. I do, will have a recommendation coming forward after we have these buildings in place, and everything that's moved around, because we know that furniture and everything will be shifting in different places, that we would conduct a new fixed asset inventory probably in the year twenty-one, twenty-two, after everything, all the dust is set up, and we would go out and relook at all of that, our fixed assets. And it's difficult to do right now, as we're building and, and buying all these new things, we do account for all of that, but it would be nice, once it's all in, to kind of have a new look at all of that, at that point.
So you're, you're saying you do a, do physical inventory, basically counting?
No, I think that would be appropriate, and probably after all the dust holes, with all this construction and movement.
Do we have one ERP system right now, or multiple financial systems? We have one, and, or is it all in one system, software system?
Our financials?
Yes.
It's in one?
Okay.
Moving on to investments, the board adopted this quite a few years ago, and I was a part of that when it was first adapted. This is really making sure that we're, all of our investments are according to legislative requirements. It is very restrictive, there's been other boards that have allowed this to be a little bit more lenient. I'm okay with it being restrictive, we do have two ALGPs that have our, majority of our investments, local government investment pools, and they have this investment policy, and now our investments are invested according to this. And so that's what that looks like, for all of our investments for the district. If you have questions about that, you can just let me know. As we move on to student activity accounting, this policy, I will let you know, that as it stands right now, will be no longer relevant, probably, you know, by, by this July. The legislature's looking at making some changes to student activity accounting, and there's some other changes that are being made to GASP standards as we move forward, so as it stands now, I brought it forward, it's up to you if you want to continue, it is an older policy, it hasn't been approved since two thousand and seven, however, I do know that this will be changing in the near future. I don't know what it looks like until the legislature makes its final determination, so that's why I agree, it's, I'm bringing it forward now. Currently, our student activities are not under board control, and in the future they will be.
If they make the change, do we go back then and rewrite the policy?
Yeah, there'll be new policies coming out.
So we wouldn't wait for another three-year cycle to come back to this?
No, no, there'll be a new policy that comes out, and NSBA most likely will come out with a new policy based on the new legislation, and you'll see a new policy for that.
So basically, what you're recommending, Julie, is board action on this as a bridge to the new requirements coming from the legislature?
Okay. And then district printing, that's just a, again, not, no changes with that one. Bending machines, this policy came into place when districts were getting tens and, tens of thousands of dollars for vending machines back in the day. The district really doesn't even have vending machines any longer that are under control of the district, majority of them are in teacher lounges, and they are the ones receiving the funds for that. We do have one here, but it's, there isn't any funds, they take all the money, we don't get any money for that any longer, so. We pay a buck and a quarter for a pop, and I think it must cost them that to put it in, so...
A buck seventy-five.
Is that what it is now? Oh my God, I don't know what it is, I don't get popped like that. So that's what that looks like. And then eight oh two, disposition of obsolete equipment and materials, I updated that to now be the same as the bid requirements, the one seventy-five, that's really the only big change there.
And these will all come back then on April eighth?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have any questions between now and then, contact Julie. Superintendent relations, don't have any.
I'll let her know.
Public engagement, I don't have anything. Informational items, it's not on our agenda, but I just wanted to make a comment that I saw in the newspaper, because of the late change, that there was supposed to be a board meeting after this, and there is no board meeting after this, because it was one gen, agenda item, and it wasn't ready to be voted on by the board, so.
And do something else.
Okay.
If you, if I could.
You can.
We also conducted an RFP for banking services, and so we did receive eight, returning all, um, RFPs back from the banks. Our local bank is being bought out by Old National Bank, and that was the reason why we looked at it. They did come back with a very favorable return, and they were our most responsive bank, they had almost the highest interest rate for our district. The only other one was US Bank, they were higher, however, their responses took over a day or two days to get any information back from them when we were looking at additional information. We really struggled. How they were having it, us earn our revenue, is that we had to make sure that our money each night got swept into our ALGIP account, because they're part of our local government accounting, investment pool, and if we didn't, we didn't get those funds, and so with our local bank, they did a really nice job of almost getting that same interest rate, and they were super responsive and very helpful for us, and so our recommendation would be to go stay with them.
What's the difference in the rate? Curious.
On the rates, the, it was prime minus thirty-five points from Old National, and it was prime minus twenty points from US Bank.
What other banks were, were sent to, and how is the RFP distributed?
We had, we distributed to any bank that was in our district, that we had a local bank in here, first of all, and then anyone else that had a request from us, and so it went to Bremer Bank, it went to Market, it went to, can you answer the list? I can get that to you?
US Bank.
Yep, all of those.
Went to Wells, went to Bell, because we just opened up a Bell branch that down...
Did not go to Bell, I don't believe. There were eight banks that responded anyway, and there were more banks that it, it did go to Wells, Wells did not respond.
That's surprising.
So, I mean, so anyway, there was other banks that had opportunities that did not respond.
We don't take a loan out from them, that's our, it's our...
So, it is there, we had, I felt we had really good response, it was all over the board for financials, and... board for financials. And they were the two highest ones that we had for fees, minus fees, rates minus fees to get up to that result. So.
So what do we change at the end of the year?
No, we will have to change no matter what by April 15.
Okay. They're making a big change that weekend?
No.
Oh, the bank is.
Yeah. So we will be Old National Bank.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk about anything that has been on our agenda? Okay, then we'll adjourn.